Some sort of project that where he's going to be managing some trail building that's actually going to happen. I mean, otherwise.
Yes.
So maybe Jesse wants to talk about it something like to justify the if it's just for because he's on ProSab.
Yeah, basically, it's a. It's it's a workshop geared towards community organizing to help make a community more bicycle friendly.
Oh, so it's not actually a trail building workshop?
No.
And how do you plan on using this within, you know, like plans that you see happening in the next couple of years?
Well, to my knowledge, we don't have any definite plans to build any trails or mountain bike or bicycling features. That is one of the things that I would like to champion in general. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to join ProSab and also something that I just care about a lot. And so this is essentially an opportunity to network with other other people who've done it. You know, to see a model community, kind of meet some of the people and some of the stakeholders there. And also just learn the best practices for community organizing toward toward that end of creating a bicycle friendly community.
Yeah, because I know last year there was a lot of talk about building trails and it so far has just been talk. Does ProSab have anything in the pipe works that would actually justify all this?
Well, there's a Trails Master Plan that some CU graduate students have recently undertaken and offered to work on for their graduate program. I know Eric, I'm kind of taking over for him on ProSab as the liaison. And he's done a lot of work towards, you know, kickstarting that Trails Master Plan refresh on that. There are some Parks and Rec Master Plan documents that have been.
What about that downhill bike trails you were talking about last year?
Yeah, I'm eager to break ground on that as soon as we can as a public decide where it's okay for for me to do that.
Because it hasn't even been brought up.
It has been brought up.
Not to the BOT, and I'm really anxious about it. And I I really want I want it to happen. It just what I don't want is that we spend $1,500 on you to go to a conference and nothing happens like nothing happened last year. I'm not blaming you. It's a bureaucracy process. But I'd like to see that coming out of this, actually, we get results because you're going to.
I'm trying to. I'm trying to do, you know, I offered to build bike trails for Netherland and to the tune of $20,000. When before I was elected to the BOT and it's not necessarily why, you know, what was the main impetus for joining the BOT? But it is one of the things that I care deeply about. And, you know, it's probably the thing that I'm, you know, my closest personal agenda is to help encourage a more bicycle friendly community. And I have been strategizing with Miranda as well as members of the ProSab about what's the best way to get this done?
Yeah.
Just go and and start building trails. I'll get yelled at. And so we've been trying. I would love for us to just as a BOT to pass an ordinance that says we're going to build mountain bike trails in this area. That'd be great as far as I'm concerned, but I think that we would get a lot of pushback. I don't think it would be a popular move, and I don't think it would be respectful of our Netherland planning process, which is where I've been encouraged by Miranda to kind of go through that that process, you know, do community organizing, which is basically what this workshop is designed to do. It's not, you know, I offered to do pushing the dirt around and building the bike trails as far as I'm concerned is super easy compared to winning over the popularity of building bike trails. So that's why I need.
I what I'm saying is I I haven't heard boo about it to the public or anything since this got brought up over like a year ago to the DDA and stuff. And I just hope that, you know, this goes beyond just like the talking stage and gets into more of an action stage pretty quickly here. Because like the seasons are so short here and it's been, you know, it's frustrating to me as an onlooker to see no progress being made on something that's pretty simple idea to put to the public. And I mean, I just, I hope that I'd be, I mean, let's put it this way. If next year there's been no progress on this, I'm going to be really disappointed.
I agree.
You know, because we've just given you $1,500 for your own self and didn't help the community. So I really hope that this helps the community and that you actually can get something done regarding this on any of the two locations that we have discussed, you and I and DDA. The DDA had a different location than the one we discussed, but I just feel like I haven't seen any traction on this. And it's really frustrating to me. And then now you're asking for money and that's fine. It's not my money, but I I am, I don't have any plans of using it myself, but please.
It is your money.
It's my tax money, my tax money, but like it doesn't physically hurt me. Anyway, just please keep that in mind, you know, because I'm going to be watching this and making sure that there's progress. I, you know, I had a meeting with Sam the other day and I don't know how that, you know, I just this the downhill bike trails in both those areas, I don't feel like are going to be that controversial. And I just haven't even seen it come up as a discussion item and I'd like to see that.
It sounds like this is the first step. This this conference is the first step in getting that all going.
It doesn't have to be, Nicole, but I'd be happy that it's.
Maybe like a 30th or 40th step. A lot, a lot has been going, I mean, this has been discussed publicly and is discussed publicly every single month and every single ProSab meeting. It is on an agenda of a publicly noticed meeting. So if you're interested in hearing about progress that's being made on the various bike projects in town, come to one of those meetings and you'll hear.
Well, I just don't, I don't know, I'm tired of the talk and I'm ready to see some action on this.
It even made it to DDA.
I'm much better at moving dirt than talking, Tanya.
I'm just saying, I just, it's one of those things where I I'm really in support of it. So much so that I don't understand why there's so much dilly-dallying on the issues when all I feel like, but that's fine. I I'm supportive of this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I mean, I I.
I don't appreciate it.
Don't don't appreciate it what?
No, I'm just sick of hearing about this dilly-dallying and all this kind of nonsense. It's not accurate to say that. People are working very hard and extremely disrespectful of those people to talk like this in a public meeting. So I would respectfully ask that you stop.
Mayor Billy, can I just add really quick that any sort of development development like this has to go through the Netherland public process? So yes, it's gone before ProSab and the DDA, but it has to go through all boards and commissions. So there are some steps, but two trustees, Ismael and Mayor Potemahold. It has already made some of that traction, but it hasn't finished the NPP process. And that is required by code under the use group tables.
Yeah, when I saw when Jesse first brought this up and, you know, and we see the ProSab paying for someone else to go. I can't, I can't remember if that's someone from Parks Department or someone from ProSab. But that if a lot of this is about community organizing and kind of next steps on making something happen, that is the beginning of moving it through the rest of the process it has to go through.
Right.
I know this has been kind of, a lot has happened and there's been some stops and starts. But it it seems to me like a good way to, a good investment.
And someone from our Parks team would go if approved would go with trustee Severs.
Cool.
One last question on the on the tourism grant that is due on the second, yes?
Correct.
When do we hear back?
I would imagine 30 days later. I think the goal is to execute contracts with a start date of May.
Okay, great. And I think I saw Jill come in. Thanks to Wild Bear for participating. We appreciate it.
I did, I did, I did have a question that I had asked about the transportation. Sorry. Right, is that the one? Yeah, um, that when I you look in there and I saw the transportation multimodal plan and it lists a bunch of resources at the end and Miranda helped me understand this better, but I'll just say it out loud. That, um, it listen there, the Big Springs egress and I was worried, you know, is Big Springs egress waiting on this? But it, the reality is, I was told and correct me if I'm wrong, that no, it is not. They're both happening concurrently and they hopefully inform each other. And they both, actually, the Big Springs egress is even has a farther out finish date. So this this that will not hold up the Big Springs egress.
Correct.
Any other questions around our seven pretty full consent agenda items? If not, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Macy, when you're ready?
Mayor Potemahold.
Yes.
Trustee Kims Ismael.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate that. So we have, next we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. We've got several comments that came in regarding the NCBD, our development plans, that central business district redevelopment plans. Several comments there, which we have all read and I hope you do too. And a comment on parking and a comment on the BOT. So we appreciate all your comments and we would also open it up now for anyone first here in person in in the room. If you have any public comments on non-agenda items, now is your time and we'll open up online after that. Yes, go ahead and Kayla. And and you'll be number two. Can't remember your name. And Kayla, you have three and only three minutes.
I'll give Kayla my three minutes.
Ah, don't worry, you'll get, you get to keep yours.
Uh, Kayla, it's 12:50 Eldora Road. Uh, thank you. I will be short. I'm wearing my backdoor theater hat tonight. I would like the board to put it on the agenda if possible for discussion item for adjusting our rent for the backdoor theater. As you know, COVID has hit everybody. Well, it hit the movie industry. It hit the backdoor theater for our product. We're down to about a quarter of what we used to have in audience participation because people got used to Netflix and Hulu and Disney Plus and everything at home. And I think there still is a fear of coming out in large groups and in public. So I, you know, if we want to keep the theater alive and well and living in this community, we need to have a discussion about maybe adjusting the rent that is our new lease that is on the table for the backdoor theater and see if there's a way to make a public, private or or nonprofit partnership or something with the town so that we stay viable for the community. We've been here over 22 years and I do think it's a, we do an awful lot of outreach for, uh, is that one second? For other organizations. So the backdoor theater doesn't just show movies. We participate with the ski area and the ski club and we do a lot of things for a lot of organizations in the community. And it would be a really, I think, a huge loss for our town if we lost this gem because of the economics that we're living in in the times. So thank you and I made it under my time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good cause. Any other for folks in the room, any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Can I ask a follow up question on Kayla's?
Oh, yeah. Kayla, Kayla, if he's asking a question.
I just, what would be the next step if we were going to pursue Kayla's request there? Would that be something Miranda you would?
Yeah, I think it'd be good for town to give you context about kind of what was and then what happened during COVID and where we are now. So we can bring that back as a discussion item if there's support and then.
I would support that. This is Tanya. I would support that for sure.
And then have a theater come and speak to it as well.
So if we have two people, we could do that.
I'll support it.
I support it.
Yeah, especially if it was a revenue share in lieu of rent kind of arrangement would be interesting to me.
Yum.
And we can help with advertising. Thanks. Please come on up. I can't remember your name, but you'll remind me here in a minute.
Hi, I'm Aurelien Bukatko. I've been here 20 years and I've used the local bank. I think it's one of the critical items to have in a in a town like ours. And when I received my letter that Citywide was, uh, they weren't petitioning. But I want to know if we have the ability as a town to petition them. I can't imagine they can just close. I understand it's it's an independent public company. It's their problem. They didn't do due diligence on the building if they have a problem with the building. But has the town considered doing anything to object to the closure?
I'll have to defer that because I don't know the answer. I don't know that we have.
I mean, that is something the Board of Trustees could discuss with them, maybe have a group, but town staff have not had.
I mean, is that a thing that you defer to closing a business that?
I think there is scenarios where when it impacts the community negatively that you can't. I mean, I've been a CFO for three different companies and there are scenarios where, and I think we just need to do the research.
Would that mean tell them they can't leave?
Well, I think the law allows for us to to make an objection, maybe do a petition. I mean, not not to do anything, you know, improper, but it's just a, it's a big impact to the community.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate for us to let them know how much we appreciate them. I work with them outside of of here and I know the the group in Minneapolis that owns them.
Where are they from Indianapolis or Minneapolis?
Minneapolis. Yeah, it's part of the Heartland Group. And I may, you know, I don't think we can compel anybody to stay here and force them. But I certainly think we can let them know that they're appreciated and we'd, we'd, we'd like to to rally around because I think businesses are going to be impacted. I'd have to agree with you there.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Aurelien. Any other comments on non-agenda items, folks in the room?
I'm Mark Haynes. I live 220 County Road 120 West. And I've been a resident in the area for over 35 years. And I wanted to speak to the Central Business District proposal that Ron Mitchell put forth. I wanted to remind the BOT and the that when Tunston Village was proposed, when Kathmandu Plaza was proposed, they were restricted to a maximum of two floors. Three floors in that section of town will just create an incredible, it'll change the the whole feel of Netherland. Both of those construction projects were told that they needed to fit their designs into the community. And I don't think that the proposed design of that whole central, that whole lot fits the community. Three floors or not, it needs to be thought of and to fit into our community rather than trying to change the community and the way it looks. We are not Vale. We are not Winter Park. We are not Aspen. We're not Breckenridge. People come here because of it. Also, I wanted to address the fact that he's proposing a movie theater. We have a movie theater, as you were just reminded. I don't think that Mr. Mitchell really appreciates how much the community movie theater actually is a community movie theater. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Don't have any. Thanks, Mark. We have, we're taking public comments on non-agenda items. You can make a public comment on a non-agenda item and that would be your response.
I think the zoning allows you to build three. Ronald Mitchell, I'm on Central Business District 75 East First Street. Under the current zoning, if you have a flat roof, you can build three stories. I have not proposed in any way putting a theater anywhere. I made a reference in my speech that there was a theater 60 or 80 years ago. And I may have presented a picture of it, but I need no proposal whatever to have another theater. Man, it's incorrect.
Thanks for that clarification. I actually, that's how I had heard it too. So I appreciate you clarifying that. I had heard that it was going to be a theater. So thanks.
I think when it was presented, yeah, just to clarify, I think when it was presented, it was the design, the overall design of the building.
It was the old facade. I guess maybe I just took that as for the new theater. Sorry, took it wrong too. Go ahead. If you have a public comment on a non-agenda item.
I'm Arden Buck, 38 Navajo Trail, Netherland.
Martin.
Speaking about the proposed development.
Are you, are you, are Martin or Arden?
Excuse me?
Which you, oh, you're Arden. Hi, Arden. It's nice to meet you. I'm Billy. I had never met you before, so it's nice to meet you.
Okay, yeah, so I'm finding the scheme for remaking Netherland to be appalling. Consists of demolishing most of downtown and replacing it with an array of very large, characterless buildings. The Netherland that we know and love would be gone. We'd lose the qualities that draw people here, the relaxed atmosphere, the uniqueness, the quirkiness that makes Ned so attractive to so many visitors and residents. It wouldn't be a mountain town anymore. It'd be just another boring shopping strip. So it seems there's always been a conflict here between the people who live here and want the town as a good place to live and developers who want to use the town as a revenue source. So as trustees, you're elected by the people that live here and your task is not to enable the schemes of developers. Instead, your task is to protect the interests of the people who elected you. And don't be intimidated by intimidation tactics that we've seen recently. Thank you.
Thanks, Arden.
Is it proper to have flapping after public comment?
Doesn't seem, doesn't seem improper. Yeah, it's just other form of comment. Any other public comments?
I'm Betsy Buck.
Hi, Betsy.
With him.
Nice, nice to see you. Oh, do you mind talking right into the the small black microphone that's to your left?
Okay.
I have to put it right by my mouth.
All right. Yeah, 38 Navajo, Netherland. Been here over 20 years. Came up here because there were people like you with your, with their beards and their long hair and their plaid shirts, you know? You are so Netherland of 20 years ago and it's growing the same way, we hope. We hope that people can be what they want to be and casual and friendly. But but I see these block buildings that are three stories.
Please talk in your mic just so the folks online can hear you as well.
I get carried away. Sorry.
That's right, because they can't hear you.
All right, and.
Sorry.
So indeed, at the library, Mr. Mitchell talked about a resort. Is that a hotel, a theater? He did talk about a theater, retail space, restaurant space, and then the affordable workforce houses. And I just see what he is proposing as a blight to our town, to that side of the street. The other side of the street, maybe we can, maybe we can be comfortable with that. But so I just am very much against changing our culture like that. And it would be changed with big Denver kind of buildings. We aren't Denver. We aren't even Breckenridge. We are Netherland. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Thanks, Betsy. Any other comments from folks? Ron, you you made your comment. So I I think one comment per round, you'll be talking more later. But if someone wants to give you some time on their comment, that's fine. But someone else want to make a public comment? Linda?
Linda Glasser, Bridge Street, Mayor Billy, trustees. I'm not sure if anybody recalls or remembers the property at the mouth of the canyon before the Justice Center was built. It was proposed to be a large hotel, restaurant, parking, possibly some retail shops and office space. The hotel was projected to be fairly large endeavor with a path along Boulder Creek. Unfortunately, the developer filed bankruptcy, left town and spent many years at the Cayman Islands. And the project went belly up. So I don't know if any of you are aware of looking at the ruins that sat at the mouth of the canyon for years. This project became, I mean, it stayed there for many years. I see a very similar plan before the town in Netherland. Large hotel, parking, garden, walkways, theater, retail and office space. I have reservations about the project proposed before the town because of the scope and the cost of this project and to the impact of the town and the complete overhaul of the downtown area. I'm not opposed to development by any means and improving the town is important. But I fear this may become the ruins of Netherland, the downtown area. I understand Mr. Mitchell has a vision and a dream on what the town should become or possibly what the town should look like. I understand he has a need for this to be an improvement, but I feel strongly that it's just a project for him. He doesn't live in town. When I drive up the canyon and round the curve by the dam, I see the divide, the ski area and the town of Netherland, my home. I see my dad coming down from the road as a miner with other miners in town. I see him hauling wood from the ski area because they were building the lifts and the trails there. I see myself leaving this building, hitting the big hill in my Volkswagen Bug with classmates from this school and dragging Main Street with my, with my many friends from Netherland. There is so much history in this town that we cannot, it cannot be overlooked and it cannot be forgotten. We have an investment in this town and everyone has a voice. I, like each of you, have a history here, regardless of the number of years we've been here.
It's three minutes. Sorry.
Okay. It's inevitable that we must make wise, productive decisions and we must keep the true character, quirkiness and history of the town. You as elected officials are tasked with representing each of us. We have big investments and obligations to this town and the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. That is true. Any other comments on non-agenda items from folks in the room? If not, we can go to folks online. If you have any comments on non-agenda items. I'd love to hear from you. I see someone's hand up. I can't see the name from here.
Kathleen Chippai has her hand up.
Okay, hey, Kathleen.
Can you hear me?
Yep, sound good.
Kathleen Chippai, 32-year resident, 20-year business owner. I just want to address some of the misinformation I found in the packet, public comment for non-agenda items. Mr. Papich wrote, we have also heard Ron Mitchell say many times that affordable housing is the town's greatest need and it should be our top development priority. I've never heard Ron Mitchell say that affordable housing is the town's greatest need or that it should be the town's top priority. And he confirmed that for me before this meeting. Affordable housing is subsidized housing and Netherland doesn't have the tax base to afford. to afford subsidized housing any more than it currently does. It looks like Mr. Papish thinks that Mr. Mitchell is somehow personally responsible to subsidized housing, and that doesn't reflect the free market capitalism in the USA, but it sounds more like communism. Uh, if Mr. Papish would like to subsidize affordable housing on himself, I say go for it. Mr. Papish also wrote, and more importantly, did he really mean to say that all commercial properties are corporate-owned? And I haven't had time to check because I just looked at the packet briefly, but, um, I'm willing to bet most of the businesses in that are incorporated in some manner, be it an LLC or an S corp. And, um, I can see how numerous people are twisting what Ron said or misinterpreting what Ron said. Again, the theater, wh- wh- I was at the meeting on the development and the theater was used as an example of the outside, uh, exterior of the building to mimic it. Um, I also disagree with Kristen Conrad's public comment, putting it out there that, uh, she said she doesn't want to see First Street, the block on First Street, become a garage, a parking garage. Uh, no one has ever proposed that, so I don't even know why that was brought up. Um, my other question is, is what type of entity is the theater? Is it a nonprofit? I thought it was a private business owned by Kayla. So I guess that's my only question, and any minutes I have left, I'd like to donate to Ron Mitchell because I think he wanted to speak and didn't have any more time.
If you want, hit pause, Ron. If you want to come up and you can use the rest of the time if you care to. Okay. No, no, thanks for the offer, Kathleen, and, um, and, um, you do have an interesting point about LLCs and corporations. Um, any other public comments from folks, uh, attending remotely?
Teresa Bradley.
Hi, Teresa. Go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out my video, but, and I'm at one forty East Second Street, and I'm a little confused because it sounds like non, non-agenda items, but this is a, I think it might be an agenda item, but nonetheless, I-
Before you go, just, so the agenda items are, we're going to talk about our, our plan with, with the moratorium we have had, and we're going to talk about rezoning of one hundred East First Street, and we're going to talk about the Boulder County Sheriff's Office and then the staff, or the BOT retreat. So if you, if you're going to come in those, I suggest you wait, but, um, if you want to talk about something else, now's the time.
I guess I'd like to, to chime in in regards to, um, what people have been talking about with Ron Mitchell's plans. I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, I've lived in my house for thirty years now, just a block away from where Ron Mitchell is planning to, to do all this work. And, um, I, I, I guess my concern is that I don't understand why, uh, development has to happen for the entire area. There's, there's chunks of, of, land that is just sitting vacant or that could be developed and at one building at a time. So I just put to the board, when you're looking at Ron's overall plan, why can't we break it into like one building? See how that goes, um, as opposed to approving the entire thing. So I think that's all for this, and I'll be, um, commenting on the rezoning. Thanks.
Thanks, Teresa. Appreciate it. Uh, who else out there is attending remotely has any comments on non-agenda items?
That's good.
Um, hearing none, we will bring it back. Um, and I think we are done with this section of, of the meeting. Um, so we are going to go into our first, oh, come on, computer, discussion item. Um, sec, folks. Give me two secs, folks. I'm almost there. Oh, there it is. Um, this is the ordinance, five point one ordinance for subdivision applications at the Central Business District zone. Um, and go ahead, uh, I think Miranda, will you be going through the aim with us initially?
I'm happy to.
Thanks.
So on January seventeenth, the Board of Trustees passed an emergency temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications or approval for properties in the Central Business District, which included subdivision applications. That moratorium is set to expire tomorrow. Uh, during the moratorium, the trustees and sound staff started to work on really evaluating, uh, the current comprehensive plan and how that aligns with CBD zoning regulations and, and really wanted to assess whether there was consistency between the two. Um, Trustee Sterling's and Trustee Severs had volunteered to provide a recommendation on next steps, and outlined in the aim is that recommendation. So I'll just go over that quickly. The first recommendation is to allow the moratorium to expire tomorrow. Between now and March twenty-first, uh, the recommendation is to amend Chapter seventeen to add language that a lot line consolidation approved by the Planning Commission would require that any lot line dissolution in the CBD require planned unit development. Um, currently, a planned unit development is really specific to maybe size or use, but under this condition, it would mean that any lot line consolidation in the CBD would require a PUD regardless of size. Um, this really ensures, by, by doing work, this work between now and March twenty-first, it ensures that you put that regulation in place before any application is heard by the Planning Commission because there is nothing currently set for March. Um, also during this time, there is a recommendation to form a team that consists of town staff, the BOT, Planning Commission, and community stakeholders to investigate, plan, review, and analyze potential new town regulations for the CBD zone that would really comply with town's goals and the comprehensive plan. It is important to note that, that doing this under a PUD and that one recommendation for a lot consolidation triggering a PUD, one concern is that it may lead to inconsistent development of downtown. Therefore, that team is essential and you need to run those concurrently. Um, yes, the recommendation is to do the PUD, but make sure that that team gets formed relatively quickly so they can work on those larger recommendations. So the question before the board is, do you agree with these next steps as proposed by Trustee Severs and Trustee Sterling? And if so, when it comes to that team, what process do you want to put in place? And I did provide an example of how you may, you know, collect letters of interest, and that's how you'll form your community members.
Miranda, can you give me, this is Tanya, an example of why, of the inconsistencies that could be, uh, happening in development, having the PUD? I'm not understanding why.
Yeah. A planned unit development really gives the opportunity for the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission and a developer to kind of negotiate what that development might look like. Uh, standard yard and bulk requirements are not considered. It's kind of a bit of a blank slate in that sense that you can negotiate whether you want to comply with current setbacks or you want to amend. An example is, in the CBD, you can build a hundred percent of your lot. Well, perhaps under a PUD, you require a ten-foot front and rear setback. Those are things that could come in a PUD. Um, the way you could have inconsistencies is your boards are going to change, right? What happens with this board and what happens with a board five years from now, how you approach PUD development could look very different, which is why there's still recommendation to do kind of an underlying codification change. Maybe that's design standards, maybe that's, you know, development areas. Still more work to be done to help create that consistency that can still be applied when you do a planned unit development.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm in full favor of, of what's been proposed, and I would like to volunteer myself as part of the, uh, newly formed committee as well. Um, and I, I do like your idea of putting out letters. Um, not a whole lot of time, so I think it needs to get pushed on all avenues of communication so that people don't feel like they didn't miss their opportunity.
Thanks, Tanya.
I have three questions.
I go for it. This is the time for clarifying questions.
At least.
Yeah, okay, go for it.
I think, maybe, maybe it's only two.
Who's counting?
Okay, question number one. Under this current proposal, it's not clear to me when a lot line dissolution takes place.
So it's at any point in which someone brings forward an application for lot line consolidation.
So what is the requirement of a POD function, a PUD functionally do then?
So what it would do is after a lot line was consolidated, it would require that the applicant go through planned unit development before they could pull a building permit-
Right.
-and actually develop their lot.
So once again, just to be, to be clear, we're talking about, we're not actually talking about lot line dissolution. We're talking about a development. Lot line dissolution will stay the same way, which is the problem in the first place.
Well, it would stay the same way, but it would trigger the need for a planned unit development. So currently, someone could dissolve their lot lines-
Uh-huh.
-and as long as their lot was within current zone-
Right.
-regulations, they could develop it without any community input or any say between the Planning Commission, the board, and public comment.
As long as the development was used by right in the first-
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so this would trigger kind of that public engagement that, that would otherwise not be there if you dissolve lot lines in a lot that was used by right.
Right, but the lot lines would already be consolidated.
Right, so this would allow someone to consolidate their lots, but they would not be able to develop their lots or pull any building permits until they went through the planned unit development process.
And would that also apply to subsequent owners of that property?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, it would get recorded with the property, so it would forever be held with that parcel.
And it's irregardless of size.
Right.
Right. Uh, second question, at least. Let me, let me keep formulating. I should have taken notes. Sorry. Um, second question is, uh, shoot, I'm losing it.
We're here till eleven.
We're here till eleven. No, I'll get there. So, uh, just to be very, very clear, so lot line dissolution takes place, any development that happened on that property from now until eternity after that lot line dissolution takes place, needs to go through a planned unit development process.
In the Central Business District.
In the se-, right, in the Central Business District. That makes sense.
Yes.
All right, so what then is the reason why we wouldn't keep the moratorium in place until March twenty-first, when the Planning Commission meeting takes place? Because it seems, and like it's an unnecessary gap in the moratorium.
I may turn that over to Trustee Sterling and Trustee Severs. We need to talk about that.
Yeah.
Um, that the feeling is that I can't even put an application before the Planning Commission in March. There's nothing, there's not enough time.
Mm-hmm.
And so moratorium or no moratorium, there's no active application being considered by the Planning Commission. So your moratorium really maybe holds no weight because of that, because nothing can be considered right now. Because there's not enough time for public noticing and for us to prepare.
But if an application were to come in-
There's not enough time.
But we would still need to process that application in the next meeting.
For April consideration.
Right.
And that is what's happening right now.
But if, but if this team puts together something that would affect such applications, then it wouldn't affect an application that came in before March twenty-first.
Well, so I think the team is not this like hurry up, hurry up, get the Chapter sixteen, seventeen amendments done. The team is a much longer conversation. The immediacy is getting that condition that a lot line consolidation would automatically trigger that PUD. That's the immediacy here.
But there has been no finding by any group to this point that lot line consolidation could potentially be something at issue that that team ends up having to discuss, right? No, no one has got together and found-
Correct.
-that that's like something that we need to incorporate into these plans, right? So we're just saying, throw lot line consolidation out of the window. All we're, all we're worried about is the actual development. But of course, that is not what we're only worried about. We're not only worried about the actual development, right? We are worried about how our lots are formed in our Central Business District and our downtown area, in our town as a whole, right? So it seems to me that this doesn't address the problem really at all that the moratorium set out to address. It simply ignores it. It does, that sound accurate to, to everyone here? I mean, that seems to logically be the case. I mean, actually, I, I will say, it does exactly that, right? Like, you can't argue that it doesn't. It ignores the lot line consolidation issue.
It keeps in place the current code of what we have for lot line dissolution.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Um, what it does do is having it go through the PUD process or having it trigger a PUD process, I think that was one of the other concerns is that people had, is that currently there's no public review or process or anything for lot line consolidation. And so the idea being, okay, well, let's put a process in for that. Let's allow that to trigger the opportunity for the community to have input onto it when development is happening, right? And so that was sort of that process. Um, and again, I think, like what Miranda is saying, the other important piece of this is that we're addressing some of those code pieces that still need addressing. A lot of it, almost all of it, from the comprehensive plan to, you know, what's written into Envision twenty thirty documents and everything. There is still a lot that needs to be codified. It has not been codified up to this point, and so that's what the team is for.
So I very much agree with that. So that, but what, so what it seems to me is that the lot line consolidation code, or at least the code that governs lot line consolidation, is going to be at issue in the future, right? It was written before the comprehensive plan, right? It was not amended since then, right?
No, Chapter seventeen went through a repeal, replace last-
Okay, it went through a repeal and replace.
Yeah, last year.
And we purposely created the code the way it's written now because there was a lot of this like back and forth between the BOT and PC that made no sense. And so the Planning Commission had a subcommittee that was tasked with cleaning up that language and, and lot consolidation did kind of scale back to this PC-only administrative assessment, but that did happen, that change happened under the repeal, replace that was approved last year.
Okay. Understood. I had a third question, but now I've, I think, I think it got-
It'll come back.
-wrapped into the second one in some convoluted way.
That's okay. If it comes back, keep asking. Other thoughts? This is Tanya. Uh, to be, so when somebody puts in the application for a lot consolidation, it goes into a, uh, planning development. What's it called? PUD?
Yeah, Plan Unit Development.
Yeah. It has to be submitted at the same time, then?
No. So what it would allow as a developer to go through a lot line consolidation and then whenever, they could then come back with their Plan Unit Development. They don't have to be ready with their Plan Unit Development at the time in which they seek lot line consolidation.
It just ensures that whenever somebody goes to the-
Wouldn't development have to do that anyway? If you like go to get a building permit, don't you need to have-
It depends.
-your site plan and the whole nine yards?
Well, we don't have a lot of those in place. That's part of what the tiger, the team would do, but, um, the, it just totally depends on the scope of the project, the size of the project. I mean, it's-
I mean, it's something the size that Ron wants to do. I would hope at this point in our code, you'd have to have a site plan and all kinds of checks. No, or no?
So there are certain parcels, and, and not to get too specific on one person's development, but, you know, if, if you're taking that into consideration, there are two lots there. You've got a southern lot, very large, would require a PUD just simply because of size. But there's a triangular lot right above it that would not trigger a PUD and could be developed, used by right, within current code and just under a building permit. So-
You mean the second street lot?
Yeah. By doing the PUD, it basically says regardless of size, you're going to dissolve your lot lines. You have to go through a PUD, no matter what.
That means even smaller portions of the CBD, if they went through some lot line consolidation and they wanted to do something later on, any of the ten blocks, the CBD isn't-
So then it makes sense.
It'd have to go through a PUD.
It makes sense for this task force or whatever to envision what a really large lot in this, I mean, because let's not, obviously, there's the elephant in the room that we're talking about. Um, what a really large lot needs to have in code to make sure that somebody else doesn't come in and build something that's not what Netherlands wants. And so that's kind of what the task force is dealing with and that and other things regarding code. Um-
Yeah, really just trying to be consistent with the comp plan and Envision twenty thirty.
Right, exactly. All right. Thank you. Some, that's it. That was my question.
Are there other clarifying questions from the trustees? Um, John, Tom?
I did have a couple of quick questions. Um, Eric, you had some, some really pointed questions. I appreciate the thought that you put into those. Um, and I want to kind of tag along with that thought process. Maybe this thread brings up the rest of your questions for your, but, um, um, like, like Jesse, uh, I have my, my area of expertise. Um, it's not quite as, uh, um, not, not quite as useful as yours, Jesse, but, um, it doesn't, it limits my understanding of a lot of this. So with regard to consolidation, if we say move forward with allowance for consolidation, my understanding- my understanding is based on several conversations that we've had with experts and with Ron himself, the lot consolidation is not necessarily a done deal and it's not undoable. It turns out that the, um, consolidation plan, uh, doesn't, doesn't work quite as expected. I'm, I'm asking that because I, I believe in entrepreneurship in this country. And I think it's a businessman's right, a businessperson's right to be agile and change their mind or their direction at any time. If the economy or the conditions, uh, don't turn out quite as expected. So, um, you know, for businesses to change their mind, it happens all the time. And we've seen it here, even in, um, our backyards, um, a number of times. And I don't think it's out of the question that if lots, if we allow a lot consolidation, I guess the question is, am I remembering this correctly, Miranda? Maybe you can help me. Can it be undone, um, as easily as it was done?
Yeah, you could go back and subdivide a parcel after you consolidated lot lines.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that answers my question. That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
The, the owner of that lot has, has to instigate that process. It's not an automatic.
Correct. But the owner could maybe opt to do so because they want to now develop lots independently of one another.
Tom, you have any questions? Okay, um, I'm about, I'll open up for public comment here in a second. I just want to say, um, I, you know, this, this is different than it looked like it was going to be a couple of weeks ago. And, um, I for one was, was definitely for extending the moratorium. It became clear that wasn't going to happen one way or the other, um, that.
That was my third question.
Well.
And maybe you're answering it now, but why are we in a discussion item?
Yeah, um, okay, cool. And I'll try my best to answer it. And, um, I think it's worth doing that now before public comment. Um, so I was still wanting the moratorium because I felt like to do it right, we just needed the time. And it, some people want to call this, you know, some people see it as a tech, it's called stall technique. I just saw it as a means to stop action so we could fix a broken thing. Fix a, well, fix an inconsistency in our zoning code compared to our comp plan and vision 2030. But it was clear it wasn't going to happen. And so really it became down to letting people talk and, and negotiate and, and people who have good relationships. I kind of just stepped back, quite honestly. Um, it was really the original meeting I wanted to see happen that became what happened, you know, eight days ago at, at the library, much bigger and much more open. But what I really had wanted to talk about was to get back to the moratorium and, um, and, and kind of ways to move forward, um, for everyone, including Ron. So, um, Tanya actually had a very, no, actually, Tanya definitely had a very helpful conversation with Ron midweek last week, which really talked about some ideas Tanya had. And, you know, one was like, oh, let's just insert the BOT into the, uh, lot consolidation process, which made sense. Cool. We have another meeting, more, more public visibility. But the challenge was that we learned was that it would, it would have just led to more public frustration or more, more frustration and, and no real, like nothing would come of it because the block consolidation code is so minimal and loose that basically you just have to read it and the PC is going to read it and it's going to be approved because they kind of have to approve it because it's just, but there's nothing to measure it against. Basically, it's very minimal, uh, criteria. So they would approve it and once they approve it, okay, it would go to the BOT. And sure, we'd have public comments and people wouldn't want it, but like, we would just say, well, we have to go with what it says. And there is no real debate. So that's why, that's why we realized that also couldn't, um, be part of it. And so, you know, but that was a really helpful conversation to talk about.
Can I, can I say something real quick? Because you mentioned my name. My whole point was suggesting the BOTs because both the planning commission and the BOT can add reasonable, um, considerations or reasonable, I forgot the right word is, um, constraints to an acceptance.
It, it turned out at this point without extending the moratorium that we couldn't, if I understand correctly.
You're not, I mean, it says that so on the planning commission can, you know, they can accept it with some reasonable constraints to it. And so that was, you know, I was like, anyway, that's, that's what I was thinking that, you know, each is, each case is case by case situation in these lot consolidations. They don't happen very often. And that was my idea was if the BOT could add some, you know, constraints that were reasonable, that I had talked to Ron about some, I'm not even going to go into it because it doesn't matter anymore. That he was amendable to, that actually appeased my worries quite a bit. And I think that whole reasonable constraint issue shouldn't be ignored and hopefully it won't be ignored when the planning commission reviews these lot consolidations. There is a power there. It's in the words. You can add reasonable constraints. Anyway, that's, that's it.
You're right. You're right. You can, and they could be appealed too, if you read that. But, but you're right, they can, but it's, um, it's just so minimal that there's not much to, to add. To be, well, it's just, it's hard to put constraints on it as I understand it. But your, your talk with Ron did matter quite a bit because it opened things up. And then, um, you know, there, another talk happened later in the week and we were able to, um, come to something. So I, I, I just come to something I feel like just gets us out of a stalemate. You know, and, or just a moratorium ending with no, you know, cha, no change since, since we started it. So, um, with that, I would open up to public comment. Um, preferably in the room first. Go ahead, May.
May Gerald, Nederland. I guess I see a large philosophical discussion really. And that is, should one person be allowed to own more land than another? Can that happen in the downtown? When we talk about aligning the new Netherlands with the planning documents, we see words like quaint and diverse. But most of this stuff talks about growing the town from the inside out. And I think we have to be realistic. The area that Ron owns is just a nightmare of utilities. And the idea of having individual landowners trying to cobble together, let's say the dream came true and Ron's property were divided into 12 different properties. Then each property would have to work with the next and the town. The advantage to the town of having a large developer like Ron, who's really thought it through, is the town gets a bunch of infrastructure and a bunch of problems like our commercial tax base resolved at once. And is it sad? Yes. Was it sad for me when the fire department moved in and I can't watch the moon rise or the fireworks from my front door? Yes, it was sad for me. And I no longer can watch that from my front door. I have to walk down the street. So I think we really need to get serious about whether we have a community with this prisoner of a downtown with this burgeoning growth all around the downtown, any but, anywhere but. And I think that's the nightmare. That's the wildfire nightmare. That's the traffic nightmare. That's the infrastructure nightmare. So change is hard. I think Ron has really tried hard to work with the town. I think a lot line dissolution is a good idea. I have time to say I did a lot line dissolution a long time ago. I had eight 4,000 square foot lots. It took me two years to dissolve those lot lines. It was a minor subdivision. I got four lots out of it. The lady who kept me for two years ended up throwing a stapler at Scotty's wife, Mary, because she was just kind of argumentative that way and later lost her job. But anyway, that's my bitter history.
That's why we check our staplers at the door, May. Thank you. Any other public comments from, or can I hear more public comments from people in the room? Jim?
Good evening. My name is Jim Reese. I live at 66 Barker Road in Nederland, Colorado. I'm going to give you the bottom line upfront and request that you extend the moratorium to the original proposed date of July 22nd to allow time for the town to retain an outside planning firm to advise the BOT on this monumental, potentially character changing project to our downtown area. The town needs a professional planner to advise the staff and BOT and shepherd a project like this all the way through so that the fears of the community that are being expressed here, that we're going to be partially into a project and be left with a hole in the ground or something that now we're forced to change mid-project, is something that is a big fear in the community. If you have an outside planning firm that is helping shepherd this and advise the BOT and community members that are on these boards, it will be, uh, something that will allow for, I think, uh, an opportunity for, you know, you didn't know what you don't know. I, I don't know that our, we have anybody in this room that actually has the experience to know what to look for, for a project of this size. I, I think that volunteer boards and stuff that we're trying to get through in, you know, by March 22nd, March 21st, uh, to try and get all these things rushed along. Uh, it, it seems like we're trying to rush along something that is a monumental change, potential change to our downtown structure. I think now is the time to be deliberate and careful and thoughtful about how we work with Mr. Mitchell and about how we consider input from the community. A few more months to, uh, July for something of this scope to go ahead and put out for bid for planning firms to come in and spend. If it takes 10, if it takes $20,000 for a planning firm to come in and advise the staff and the town, BOT and the boards on this project, I think it's money well spent. So I, I, I just implore you to reconsider the moratorium and not be in a hurry to figure out how we can expedite this process that the rest of us in this committee will be forced to live with forever. Thank you.
Oh, I have a question for Jim. This is Tanya.
Thanks, Jim. There is a question from, uh, Tanya for you.
Jim, I'm in favor of wanting, of hiring a professional to help guide. I agree that staff and volunteers really aren't equipped for, um, these kind of big changes. But, um, but that's, isn't that more of during the, uh, development process? Like when things are actually being proposed for development? I mean, right now it's just a lot consolidation. There is no plan yet. I imagine that's coming in the future. And I'm wondering if by letting the moratorium expire, it doesn't really change anything except that, you know, we, it's time to start making sure our codes are correct and everything and we should work on that. Are you suggesting the planner help with the code changes? Or are you suggesting the planner helps during the construction of development? Because I kind of interpreted in your letter that you meant more like during the process of this development, it's too much for town staff to be able to manage. It's, it's, it, I agree. I mean, this is monumental. Or are you talking about hiring someone to help us with the zoning codes?
Both. I think now is the time to try and seek out that expertise. If this is going to go forward, it seems like there's momentum, uh, for redevelopment. There's certainly a big push for this to go forward. Now is the time for the town and the BOT to be well advised on how to change these codes, you know, to implement any ordinance changes. And, you know, what I hear now, it seems like is that, you know, there, there's folks that want to be like, how, how can we stop blocking Ron's project here? Well, you know, the bottom line is the BOT's job is to look out for the interest of the community. You know, and so four months to, uh, go out and try and find a firm. I say now, I say you should be putting it out for RFP in the next 30 days and trying to, and get four or five different planning firms that could help you on a small, uh, that helps small towns for a large planned, uh, development like this of this kind of scale. There's plenty out there. I gave you one example in my letter, but you know, SafeBuild has a planning division. You know, get somebody in there, get them in here now. Don't try and ask community members and volunteers to dig into the code and be able to advise the town on what we have to do that's going to shape what's going to happen over the next two years. Mr. Mitchell said on the meeting at the library, this is going to take four to five years. Four to five years of construction process that this is going to impact our town. The time we spend on the front end is going to be well spent.
Okay, thanks for answering the question. Thanks, Jim.
I, I just have one comment. Um, so I was on the PC with Jim for two years from like summer of 2020, 2020 to summer of 2022. And Jim almost had a hundred percent, well, as I remember, pretty much close to a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent track record of voting in favor of owner's rights, in favor of, you know, I think with his experience with his wife, his town administrator, he almost always was for owner's rights and, and voted, you know, in favor, often of the owner with SRS, including Ron. You know, when, when the paid parking came up with us, he voted in favor of that. So when I first saw your email come, I assumed you were just saying no moratorium, um, you know, but Ron, do consolidate lots. And, and, and I was, you know, I'll just say, you, you saw what I saw, which was just a potential, um, vulnerability that the town was putting it in and the need for time to do it right. So I just wanted to say that my experience with you, you came from a place of protecting or, or, you know, believing in, you know, you come from a place of owner's rights, but I think you saw this differently and, and as to that. So, thanks.
Also just to clarify, those are, um, whether planners or market specialists is our conversations that we're having about like who to support us. So we're thinking about it.
But the matter in front of us is a lot line dissolution. It's not a major, uh, public, uh, PUD. This is not in front of us tonight.
Correct, correct. So I, I am going to open, keep going with public comment for, uh, um, on the, on this subdivision ordinance.
Hello, Lindsay Danforth here, 400 Colson Street. So I come before the board as a concerned citizen, a former member of the planning commission and a former trustee who once sat where you all are right now. Over the years, Ron has brought forth a number of plans in various states of completion before me. And the board's even approved quite a few, but he never made progress. We approved his paid parking plans, no progress. We approved his plan to have tents on his parking lots to host different events, no progress. We approved his, uh, we were even ready to approve to have a workforce housing project. And he proposed that before the planning commission if he would have brought it back to follow our design standards, but he never returned. Many people can speak about the plans and promises that Ron has made over the years. And he has let every single one of us down. Ron is a member of the DDA and instead of investing money in sidewalks or beautification of any sort, he'd rather hoard the money and invest it in bonds and CDs. So given the chance to spend money on the town, not even his own money, he refuses. Ron has even gone so far as to block grants for sidewalks, recently requested delays on the transportation improvement project and which has millions in funding at stake because he might build something. His actions over the years prove that he is more of a dreamer than a doer. I say all this because I'm concerned that dissolving the entire downtown into a single lot without a construction plan, without permits or financing, leaves the town in precarious situation in the event that Ron loses interest, delays for years, or decides to sell. I'm not against dissolution as a concept. And I like the idea of having a PUD for downtown development. But I am a hundred percent against doing this without an actual plan or timeline. I come from the Rust Belt, famous for its decrepit buildings, where developers sat on properties and allowed downtowns to fall into disrepair. I don't want to see the same thing happen to our town. And I fear that allowing our downtown to become a single lot puts us at risk of waiting for years for progress, for financing or for another developer and waiting for something that never happens. I recommend only allowing lot consolidation in the CBD if there is an actual plan with funding. That's all I have to say about that. So please consider.
Thanks, Lindsay.
So different from here. Evening, board. Christopher Larson, Netherlands resident. I just want to stand up and speak in support of what we've heard here this evening from, from Lindsay, from Jim, from the others. One thing we've seen, and I will congratulate you guys on taking the step of the emergency moratorium. I know that that's a, that's a major step for a board to take to stay, say that this is a risk to the town. And we're going to stand up and take the time to think it through, think through the ideas. And some good ideas have come out of it. The P U D idea is a very good one. The problem I see is it doesn't, like I think Eric said earlier, it doesn't address the issue of the moratorium, the lot line dissolution. Providing the opportunity for that lot line dissolution in the near term locks us into a process. It really sets us down that path of one single large development, like we've heard from other people's concerns here tonight. And the idea of, and that may be the right thing. I am not, I don't want it to be said that I'm anti-development. We desperately need development downtown. We need something that fits the scale of Netherland, that fits the tone of Netherland, that gives us a commercial tax base that can really support the things this town wants to do and needs to do. However, the applicant before us on this lot line dissolution has stayed in the meeting that he has no intention of doing anything downtown for four or five years. So taking six months to think about the, what the impacts of a lot line dissolution are, to go and find, say, the planner that Jim Reese suggested in his letter in this evening, that is a step towards development, a step towards working with developers. That doesn't impact the long-term timeline. It protects the town, it takes away the risk, and it provides that sense of security for the residents. Knowing that the Board of Trustees is looking out for the interests, not only of the developer, but also for the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comments on this subject for folks in the room?
My name is Micah Rodewald, and I've only lived in town for four years. But since I've been here, I've seen a lot of just staleness, things not progressing and moving. And I guess my question is, what is the alternative to Ron's plan and his development? And I understand waiting, but to keep it cliche, there's a saying that if you wait until you're ready, you will never be ready. That being said, that I've only been here for four years, I have no intention of leaving. So when you look down First Street, change is inevitable and it's, it's coming whether we like it or not. And with the physical space that Netherland has available to it, developing vertically is really one of our only options. And I have to take Ron for his word and what he said in the meeting at the library. That now is our only opportunity to work with him. And I agree that Netherland has character and that is its the charm of this town is its character. But if we have an opportunity to work with Ron and we start moving forward on this. There are different grants and things that people can do and take personal accountability to start getting developed and things like the bike path and different recreational options for people. Once we start moving, we're going to start having more doors open. You're going to have more grant eligibility. You're going to have more people involved. If this gets approved and everybody that's against it should start taking personal accountability and being involved in it to determine what it looks like moving forward. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Micah. Micah, what was your last name again?
Rodewald. It's nice to see new faces here. Thanks.
Thanks, Micah. Any more comments from folks in the room? If not, we'll go ahead and move to folks online.
Teresa Bradley.
Teresa.
All righty. I'll just say, try to believe it. Okay. So I'm Teresa Bradley at one forty East Second Street. And I guess in regards to the lot dissolution, I would really recommend or request that the board not dissolve, do any of the lot dissolution. We have these zoning things for a reason. And I, again, I, I want to refer back to the speaker earlier who's, who referred that allowing your town to fall, downtown to fall into disrepair. It already has. There's so much land that is downtown that is just sitting there. Quonset huts and vacant lots. I would really like to see a proposal, and I'm really open to Ron proposing a building. Starting with one or two buildings that fit within the character of the town and that can fit within the, uh, the current zoning and lot lines. And if there's a bigger building that he wants to, bring it for public comment. I just really don't understand why we would want to make our entire downtown one big lot, especially when it's owned by someone who's getting on an age. I've been here thirty years. I've listened to thirty years of planning. Nothing has happened. So, you know, we, any one of us could die tomorrow. As you get older, that incidence probably increases a little bit. What happens if Ron were to pass away? Who is, who's gonna, uh, whose choices will then the town be subject to? So I just really, really caution, I really don't think we should be hiring for ten or twenty thousand dollars planners. We have a plan. We have lots. We have zoning. Let's encourage Ron to, to bring forth plans that were, are really suiting, suiting our town. And, and to do it in a timeframe that's realistic, like start building something right now that fit, that fits in with our town and not just try to develop the entire town all at once, downtown all at once. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. More comments from folks online? If you're speaking, we can't hear you. Hit star six. Go ahead, Scott.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. I have a couple of comments. The first one is that I think that there is a mistaken impression among too many people in the community. That we either have to leave things the way they are and not develop at all, or we have to build the Titanic with Ron. And there's a whole bunch of, whole bunch of options between those two extremes that I think we as a community should be, should be trying to pursue. And I think if we just step back as Jim has recommended and a few other people have recommended and, and be more deliberate about this whole thing and think about more options as a community than just, we have to leave it a mess as it is on First Street, or we have to build the biggest development we can possibly cram in there. We, we don't have to do either one of those things. We could certainly develop in more tasteful, scale, scalable size developments. And you know what, Ron, you're, you're the owner of these properties. You could, you could work with the town and we could do something in a little bit smaller scale, do it a piece at a time. There's a lot of opportunity to do things that are very tasteful. And, and mountain town flavored the way this, this community is. And we get a lot of money to be made by landowners and by developers and people who are participating. And, and an opportunity for the town to go in the direction the town really wants to go in. The other thing is, you know, I think just to be more deliberate about this is, would be a wise move. And as far as, you know, I see a slippery slope. People talk about this lot line consolidation as it's just this one thing. This doesn't mean that we're approving anything big, but all of these little steps in this direction, they all lead down that road. And at some point in time, we'll get a little further down the road and and I, I'm afraid the attitude at that point will be, well, we've already done this. We must have done this for a reason. So let's just keep going this way. We don't, we don't have to do that as a community. We can be a lot more deliberate and a lot more, lot more intentional about the way we develop our town. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, Scott. Any other comments from folks online?
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you now. We can hear you now.
Kathleen Chipai, a thirty-two-year resident of East Magnolia, twenty-year business owner. I want to thank Jim and Lindsay and Chris Larson for reminding us why, why this has been going on for years and years and years. We have people that aren't good planners and focus on personal interests. And we have a guy that anyone else could have bought any of those properties, especially the lot, that's parking lot on First Street right now. That was for sale for years. And Ron bought that because the town, he realized if he didn't buy it, someone else is going to buy it and the town wasn't going to be able to use it if it needed for a, a, a bridge, a emergency crossway, a second crossway. But the town didn't have money for that. The town doesn't have money for anything. Half the people say, well, it's blighted. It's all blighted, but yet you don't want it developed. We, we, the town had Joe Minicozy, who's one of the top planners in the country. And he, I sent the link to the board members. I don't know if you watched it or not, but I said in that email that that was ten thousand dollars. That was a twenty thousand dollar presentation for him to do that. And we know that Ron has said, and we all know, it can't be, none of these lots, the zoning is off, the lines are off, they're overlapping. Nobody's going to be able to get any kind of money to be able to, to develop because they're not clean titles. And then we have Lindsay Danforth just suggesting that the money has to come in front of the project or with the project. That's an impossibility without the lines being dissolved. So it's currently legal to dissolve the lines and I support whatever Ron Mitchell is going to agree to for his own best interests. And I think that as a developer, we should listen to Ron's plans that have gone on for decades and we should also consider what Joe Minicozy said. And building upward in the inside is what the comp plans and the intention of this community has been the whole while. And Ron's willing to negotiate and other developers are not willing to negotiate. So the longer this thing, longer this thing gets dragged out, the more sure we can be that it's going to be a big developer that gives Netherland the middle finger with a bunch of attorneys and does whatever they want. So you know, I, I don't think, Ron's been honest with me for twenty years of business, never once gone back on his word. And these projects that Lindsay Danforth has the audacity to say that he let the community down, please, please. He didn't need to spend thirty thousand dollars to do an S R U to move his parking lots from, uh, to paid. He didn't need that.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments from folks online? Go, go ahead, Ron.
Ron Mitchell, seventy-five East First Street. My first comment is this format is unfair. I have three minutes to respond to nine people who each had three minutes. First one I'm going to respond to is Jim Reese's comment. I agree with him. We need a planner. I also agree with Kathleen Chipai that when Joe Minicozy came here, he gave us a real bargain. He is one planner that I'd be willing to work with, but there have been others. Catherine Correll of Downtown Colorado is one of the real geniuses in planning. She's been here. She's tried to help Netherland. So in that regard, I think it is a good idea to have a planner involved. And I think it's a good idea to have one that came before. Dan Burden came here, nationally known consultant, and he came twice. He got a very small audience each time. Now that I'm ready to do something, there's a larger audience. There's some errors. I'm going to go to Christian Conrad's thing. There are reasons that I didn't go through with the first time that I made an application. Let me tell you what they are so that general comments like that that are accusatory and defamatory need to be answered. The first one is that technology, technology has changed for parking. I agreed to put in meters and kiosks. That's a huge amount of infrastructure for old technology. The technology has moved to where license plate recognition and parking systems can be done by phone. It's a lot easier. It's a lot more secure. You don't have to have somebody collecting coins out of a meter. And we're going to lose a bank that would process coins. So that would mean lots of gas going up and down the hill to process a small amount of coins. The other things that were in that S R U at the time, there were properties that were under contract, but I hadn't purchased. I have now purchased all those and I'd like to leave that or to have that sort of clause taken out. It was a bulky contract. It had things in it. It was not adequate. And so that's why I didn't do it. I just waited till the technology became readily available. There's a lot of competition between these parking companies and so the price is going down. Also, it seems to me that if the parking thing evolves, I would like to work with the town and have one system for the private parking and once, and the same system for public parking. If we can't come to terms and some sort of agreement and work together, that isn't going to happen. So I was waiting for the town to see if they were going to do something with regard to parking. Well, again, we're at a juncture where I'm going to do something on my own if I can't work with the town. I don't want to do that. So there were a couple of other items that I can't bring up that Christian Conrad made saying I'd never done anything.
So, so actually, real quick, I'd like to give Ron three more minutes because I also want him to talk about.
Chris Rivera is actually willing to donate in three minutes to Ron.
Great. That's one. There was also something I hope, you, you can keep talking. We're going to give you three more minutes. Because I was also hoping you'd talk about this week's, last week's meeting.
So also, when I get a mayor, Mr. Larson has several times made the comment that I'm holding the town hostage. I have repeatedly approached him in the years that he was mayor to talk with him. And the last time I talked was two years ago and it was not a comfortable conversation. When someone doesn't get a reception or gets inside information that no matter what he's going to propose will be turned down, there's no incentive to do it. And that's what I got. We all know, there's a rumor mill, we all know, that some people have accurate information, some are not. Why should I make an application? If I know it won't be accepted and I knew it wouldn't be accepted. So I didn't make the application. In terms of the tent, when I got to doing that and it looked like a good idea, Safe Built said it had to have and meet town codes for a structure. That was impractical financially. I didn't do it because of the incredible requirements that occurred after it was approved. I had no idea to have to meet all the safety requirements that it did. It just wasn't going to work. So I didn't do it. But I wanted to try, so I put it through the process. So I don't think you can just say I haven't done anything. Why? Think about it. Would one man over a period of fifty years try to buy properties and not, then not want to do something with it or see something done? And I'm quite well aware that somebody else may do it. That, you know, life comes to an end. The errors that have been said here tonight, I haven't had, I didn't take notes, but there have been a lot of them. The very first one was somebody saying I was going to do a theater. I presented an old picture of an old theater. And what I said was, I'd be willing to reproduce that facade on a building. And one of the things to give some of the old historical character back to the town before it was the quirky that it is now. Maybe it wasn't quirky then. It was a mining town. It was a different attitude in terms of funky and quirky and what design codes were then. There were no design codes. But in fact, the town did have many different kinds of buildings and that theater was one of the most different buildings in the entire town. If you look at the historical, historical photos, that one stands out as the most unique and different. as the most unique and different of any building in town. Thank you for your time. I would like to take a three-minute break if I could.
Yeah, I think a break will be fine. I want you to be here. Okay. I was hoping for him to come at this week's meetings, but that is fine.
I can, if that's helpful.
That would be helpful. Let me just, are there any more public comments? Okay. We'll listen to one last public comment as I work, and then we'll come back.
Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. This is short and sweet. The Backdoor Theater is a 501(c)(3). I have never taken a dime of salary from that organization in 22 years. Thank you. If you came to the movies, you would know that. The other thing is, is there was a comment made, first of all, I just saw hell freeze over tonight when Kathleen Chippai said she agreed with Mayor Larson and Chris, you know, anyway. The other thing is, people make, they do make accusations. And there are comments floated around here that there isn't a chance for people to rebut them in a way that needs to happen. Information, I'm just going to set the record straight. Ron didn't buy a piece of property, the lot across from the Snyder, Old Snyder Garage, because nothing had been done there. That property was originally purchased from Jack Snyder, by the Historical Society upon his death because he basically donated it to us to be able to sell it and endow the museum. The market went down to nothing. We could not move the property at all. We had more expenses than we had income coming in because we're all volunteers. So we, the Historical Society at the time, that I was president and volunteered with for 30 years in that organization, decided to sell it. And it was purchased by, and forgive me, I can't remember the gentleman, but then Ron bought it from him. So it wasn't originally purchased to build a bridge, to do whatever. It's a great piece of property, and it has a lot of history in this town, too. So if you're going to make statements, please at least be, educate yourself a little bit more to find out the truth behind things because there is a whole lot of institutional knowledge that's in this community that some people have that needs to be unearthed, protected, thanked for, and used. Thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. Any other public comments? Oh, go ahead, come on up.
My name is Debbie Smiley, and I live at 139 East First Street. I've been there 38 years. And I'm going to speak just personally because all the professionals here that have given their opinion have done a really good job of that. I think that this project needs to be reviewed by an outside planner as well. I think that would be the best thing to look at the whole town, not just the block on First Street. But as a First Street resident, I must say the idea of working all night long so it's not interfering with traffic as they do the construction for five years is not appealing to me at all. And as a resident of First Street, I would like to say I embrace the blight more than I would ever embrace a project like Ron has proposed. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Any other comments? So hearing none. Miranda, would you talk about that?
Yes, so Ron does have a lot line dissolution application that he intends to put before the Board of Trustees. If you lift the moratorium, that won't.
Before the.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission, thank you. Even if you lift the moratorium, he does not intend to go before the Planning Commission in March for his own personal reasons and has opted for consideration in April.
Thanks. Appreciate that. So I'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
I do have some thoughts. As a lot of folks will know, if you've been attending these meetings, I am a process guy. I like good process because I think good process is the absolute cornerstone of democracy, obviously besides public participation. But honestly, public participation is process. So really, process is the cornerstone of democracy. And if we're not operating with good process, I think that we are more likely to get adverse results. I appreciate that Trustees Evers and Trustee Sterling have endeavored to find a solution to this particular issue that our town is currently, I won't even call it a problem. It is simply an issue, right, that the town is currently experiencing. I don't think it's the best solution because I don't think it's good process. And the reason why is because there is no ordinance language here at all that says that a lot line dissolution must be followed by a PUD, right? It's not here. It's not in this document, right? We can't operate a town on pinky promises. Doesn't work that way, right? We can't just say, well, so-and-so said that something would be done. Because we've all found that that changes, right? People change their minds. People aren't able to attend meetings. Votes don't go the way that you think that they will. Small quirks in language, right, when you're adopting code, can become big hangups, right, that you can have disagreements about. There is no code language here that we can vote on to ensure that lot line dissolution is followed by a PUD. So this doesn't solve, unfortunately, the issue that we have at hand. It fundamentally doesn't. I would love if it did. And I would love to vote on something that did. But it's not even an action item. This accomplishes, unfortunately, nothing at all. I sincerely wish it were not that way, right? And I think it is very possible that we might pass some language before March 21st that ensures that a PUD happens as the result of lot line dissolution. But I'm not willing to risk the town on that if, but, and might, right? That doesn't make sense. Process is everything. This is bad process. We have to continue the moratorium until code language is written to bring this compromise to reality. It is not reality right now, it's just a notion.
And so the idea being that explicitly stating as an action item in an ordinance stating that a lot line dissolution approval triggers a PUD for development.
I mean, we have to adopt, we have to adopt language in order for it to actually be adopted, right? We can't put that off into the future. We have to do things in the correct, at least from my perspective, the correct order, which is if we don't want something to happen in a certain way, then we ensure that it doesn't, right? Not we hope that it doesn't and see what happens later.
Yeah, and I think bringing it up as a discussion item was to, and rightly, and heard correct, you know, heard rightly that, you know, because we debated that, like, should it be a discussion item or should it be an action item? Because it's like, hmm, maybe as a discussion item, we can at least surface if there are other ideas or anything like that. But I see your point, like, it should have just been an action item and something to vote on.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a, like, a severe adverse material impact, right, that continuing this moratorium had on the community or an individual, then, you know, maybe we would be having a different conversation. But there isn't. There is no severe adverse material impact on anyone if lot line dissolutions are suspended for another month, another two months even, right? There, that is fundamentally the case. That is what we're actually dealing with here. So why would we put even a minor risk on the town, however minor, when there's no reason to?
And so you're saying that the risk being that if a lot line dissolution application were to come before the PC, before the time that we have to amend the code?
What if we don't amend code?
We will amend code.
I mean, you can't, you can't say that we will, though. It's a vote of a board of seven.
Well, we can make this an action item today, can't we?
And can we write the code in real time right now and have, you know, we can't even pass an ordinance that quickly. That's not how it works.
This actually is a Chapter 16 and 17 amendment, so there is a need to go before the Planning Commission. They're going to hold a special, assuming you go the path that's before you. The Planning Mission will hold a special meeting to review the proposed ordinance, and there needs to be a 15-day public noticing for a public hearing. So the soonest you could vote on it is March 21st.
But again, waiting that time, there is no severe adverse material impact on any person whatsoever if we just continue the moratorium until that is complete. There's no problem with doing that, right? No one has indicated that that is an issue, nor has presented us with any information that would suggest that that is a problem, right? So why are we so resistant to it? It doesn't make sense. I'm confused.
I don't think it's necessarily a resistance, but it's, it was, you know, it's a kind of a compromise.
A compromise of the town with one person. That's not a good compromise to make.
I think in general, it was not necessarily just for one person, but thinking that if a moratorium was going to have, a continued emergency moratorium to be voted on, needed six votes out of seven for our board.
Indeed. I would like, I would like us to vote on that to see where everyone stands properly here. Because there is no severe adverse material impact on anybody if the moratorium is continued until this ordinance language is passed, this proposed ordinance language. Not even proposed, right? Because there is no language here, right? But this idea for proposed ordinance language, right? There is no impact. So why don't we just continue the moratorium?
I just wonder, because you, you know, there's no reason to move this to an action if you're looking for a poll, if Mayor Billy just wants to poll the board to see where people stand on the emergency moratorium.
I have a quick question. You had said something about, well.
We could move this to an action item.
That's what I would like, I'm going to move to move it to an action item.
I would like to make a comment before we do.
Yeah, yeah, and I have a comment, too. Actually, my question is, to do, for the PC, for that to come around, for us to vote by the 21st means the PC, we'd have to have an extra meeting? Or is it?
It's a special meeting, and we've already sent the request out for them to schedule that.
Okay. Thank you, I didn't, I appreciate that. Okay, go ahead, Tanya.
Okay, I had prepared some notes because originally I thought this was going to be a discussion about extending the moratorium and not this specific about the PUD and all that. I didn't, yeah. And this is what I wrote. I'm just going to read it from my phone because I made little notes. And it's entitled, Reasons Why I'm Okay With Letting The Moratorium Lapse. And number one is, I believe we can handle a lot of concerns through zoning and mandatory design standards in the CBD, in particular for large lots and large buildings. I think this needs to become a priority for all the boards, and I'm happy to help during the process. Two, I think Ron is willing to compromise. The Planning Commission has the ability to place reasonable conditions on the lot consolidation. One of which could be if Ron chooses not to move forward with the development and instead prefers to sell, the lot lines return to the original or most likely new lot lines that aren't all over the place would be drawn, but a similar amount of lots. And I did talk to Ron, and he was agreeable to that as a reasonable condition. I don't know if he still would be. That was during, like, a casual conversation. When talking to Ron, I asked him why it has to be one big lot? Since it's three buildings, why can't it just be three lots? And he said to do the underground parking, he needs to tear it all up, therefore it has to be one lot. Well, I also think underground parking is a good idea, would be really beneficial to town. And so a short-term pain on that might be worth it in the long run. Fourth point, I support infill over sprawl. And definitely prefer this over, you know, bringing sprawl out into the forest. This is definitely infill. I know that, myself included, people aren't in love with it, you know. I think it's too big myself. But I think, again, I think Ron is possibly agreeable to discussion on this. And I think all this could be discussed in point one, which is in the zoning considerations, design considerations. I think a built development with all the retail and housing belongs in town on First Street. So if this is going to happen anywhere, this is where it should be happening. We are, it's the heart of town. I've also heard complaints about the housing being market rate. And with all of Ron's projects, if any of them ever happen, there will be so much housing created by the laws of supply and demand. Rents will decrease for everybody. It won't just be a subsidized affordable housing thing. It will be, there will be a lot more housing stock and maybe too much, and then prices will go down. And finally, during my previous time on the board, because I was on the board before Meener, I think, are the ones, nothing was ever brought up about this. Never was brought up as a serious concern that we need to protect ourselves against big lots, change maximum lot sizes in the code, or make building zone changes. This was never a conversation, at least not publicly, that I was part of. And Ron's plan has always been out there at the library. We know this is going to be attempted to happen. Why didn't we have the foresight in the previous administration, of which I was a part of and complicit in? Why, why didn't, why weren't these changes brought up in a non-emergency sort of way if it's such a big deal? I don't understand why all of a sudden it's like, it's become this big situation when we should have, as a town and with everybody, we should have been dealing with this preemptively. So it's one of those cases of, of, you know, someone's lack of planning is becoming an emergency all of a sudden. And I'm not okay with that. We had the chance to do this in a leisure way, and we never did. So for all those reasons, and I think I'm okay with letting the moratorium lapse, but I think we can't drop the ball. Any zoning issues, especially regarding large lots and large buildings, that stuff, we need to get on that quickly and efficiently and create something so that if this were to change hands or just to control all the things the public have been saying, people want development, that some want it small, some want it big, we need to come up with a compromise on that. So that's my point, that's my comment.
Thanks, Tanya. Any other comments? So I think we will take this poll, I'd like to take this poll. But I would like you to clarify, you know, when you think of extending a moratorium.
I am in favor of the proposal, generally speaking. I still think that lot line consolidation at this scale is risky for our businesses that are in those lots right now, right? For all sorts of reasons, for the town, it's also risky, right? However, I see that risk as fairly minimal in the grand scheme of things, right? So generally, as a kind of a compromise solution, I am in favor of what's proposed here. But what's proposed here is not being put in place right now, and the moratorium expires tomorrow, right? That is fundamentally the problem. So I think that we should extend the moratorium until such a time as this plan is made functional and we actually vote it into code. And then the moratorium can expire, and everybody's happy, and we all get exactly what we intended to get.
Can I ask, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Miranda or Jennifer Turney-Madson on this? To what Trustee Kums Ismail is saying, that it's not ready to be written into an ordinance. Do you have counsel on that? How quickly or?
Well, right, that's where, you know, again, I think where it gets a little tricky is, are we amending 17 and 16? You know, and I think there's value in making sure you're amending 16 PUD as well as 17. Second, you amend 16, then you have the Planning Commission weigh in plus the public hearing and the 15-day noticing, which makes March 21st the earliest you could adopt this ordinance. Now, if you're just amending 17, we still need to bring back ordinance language. There's nothing you can do tonight because there's no language before you to Trustee Kums Ismail's point to vote on.
Right, and we've, this proposal says we will get it done by March 21st. So I'm still saying we get this done by March 21st. Like, what I'm, basically what I'm saying is, I agree with this, but I think we should actually do this instead of do it backwards, right? We should actually do the plan that's in place here, which is to put a moratorium on it until we put in the town code that if you do a lot line dissolution, you have to do a PUD.
So a moratorium until March 22nd, so four weeks, extending four weeks.
By the timeline provided in this aim, which is provided by Trustees Evers and Trustee Sterling, that would be, that would be reasonable, I think.
I would vote yes on that.
I'm just saying, I'm just looking at your timeline and saying, let's do what you have proposed, but actually do it in the correct order.
I'll take a poll. We'll take a poll. I would have announced on that. If you want, I would, I would vote yes on that. Four weeks for us to really. If you want, I would, I would vote yes on that, four weeks for us to really have that safeguard in place to meet the timeline that's in front of us of when we'd have this PUD written and ready and for the PC and back to us so that we could pass an ordinance.
I'd like to comment on the timeline.
Yeah.
I think the, the moratorium, in my opinion, if we were to extend it, would only, uh, to, um, achieve what I'm hearing Eric is asking us to achieve it, would only need to stay in place until such time that we were able to draft and approve, uh, language that Nicole and I came up with, that in my opinion satisfies the fear that the moratorium is calling a timeout for. So, the solution we came up with, in, in my opinion, ultimately alleviates the fear, which is Ron or any subsequent owner of lot number five on his diagram that he showed us in the, in the public meeting, that's the only lot out of all the lots that he's looking to, um, consolidate lot lines, that is small enough that would, it would not otherwise trigger a PUD. So with our new proposed amendment to the code, every lot line consolidation in the CBD triggers a PUD. Therefore, we catch the one little straggler, that lot number five, that was not going to necessarily be falling under the PUD requirement, and somebody could build something ugly use by right, and that's what we want to prevent. What we want to ensure is that we have plenty of public participation in whatever happens in the CBD, and, um, that's why we have such a turnout, and that's why we have such strong feelings, and, um, that's what I'm hearing loud and clear from the public, and that's where I think that our solution satisfies that fear that the public's not going to have influence over what's the future of our downtown and our CBD. So, if we were going to extend the moratorium, back to the point, um, I would, um, potentially consider, uh, extending the moratorium only long enough for Jennifer Madsen and Miranda to work on getting us that alternate code, which in my opinion could be as early as next
You have a chapter 16, 17.
That's the one thing.
Okay, so help me understand, because, um, as we were discussing and coming up with the solution, I understood that we could do an emergency more, um, an emergency ordinance that we, we even considered potentially trying to draft it and having it ready for tonight, but we just decided that was too ambitious, and, um, and then we would have potentially been able to pass it by emergency tonight, which I felt I could win you guys over and with arguments and convince you that this is a valid, this is, um, worth doing. So, help me understand why now it seems to be different than what I understood.
So the recommendation is to amend chapter 16 and 17. Chapter 17 handled on its own, could have been done under that structure of your emergency or your, your regular ordinance, it doesn't require the public hearing, and that can move quicker, but you ideally, we don't want all these inconsistencies in code, so there is benefit in amending the PUD in chapter 16, as well as the lot line consolidation in chapter 17, rather than handling them separately, and that then adds in this extra trigger piece of 15-day public noticing, a public hearing, and going before the Planning Commission.
Okay, I don't understand why, what is the amendment to the PUD that would, um, that you're suggesting?
That, that make it mirror the lot line consolidation, so that it's clear in the PUD that if you saw a lot line consolidation, that you would, that that's a trigger for a PUD. Because right now, the PUD criteria wouldn't list that. So someone's looking at the PUD, not realizing that it ties to 17, it's best to have them reference each other, so when someone's looking at the criteria of what requires a PUD, there is language in there that says, you know, consolidation of lot lines in the CBD is a trigger of a PUD regardless of size.
Also logistical, if we were to extend it, the moratorium for four weeks, is that still considered under the emergency moratorium, and it requires a vote of six out of seven?
It requires a six to extend the moratorium.
Correct, because it's still an emergency.
And just to remind folks, we did get an indication from town staff that, that this one, that there would be nothing happening in March anyway.
We have written confirmation from the one and only application we have, that they, that applicant is not coming forward before the Planning Commission in March.
Right, so once again, I, I just have to reiterate this, there is no material impact on anyone if we just, by, if we just do this the right way, instead of do it this, this backwards way. It doesn't hurt anybody at all, and nobody would be mad.
And maybe I can just add, I think, for, just to speak a little bit for trustee Sterling and Severs, I think the thought was, because there is no application, and it was unsure if you were going to have six votes. This, you know, you kind of get both, whether you have the moratorium or you don't, you still have the same outcome, especially if you maybe aren't getting the six votes, and I think that is why the discussion took that turn of let the moratorium go, because it seems very unlikely that six votes were going to happen, and maybe that's changed. But at the time in which the conversation was held, it was very unlikely six was going to happen.
Perhaps I'm just a relentless optimist, I thought I was a cynic.
You could be both.
You're an optimistic cynic. Or cynical optimist.
You can be both, it's okay. So yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of the, the net result, is it was, you could go either way.
Yeah. Well, to me, it seems that, I, I understand the thinking now more clearly, but I still think it's bad process.
Sure.
And I'd rather we get the six votes, do the process right, and make sure that we're safeguarded on every side, because that's, that's to me, our job.
Eric's in the house.
Thanks, Eric. Tom, John, what are you thinking, comments first?
I wish I'd never voted for this moratorium. In the first place, I, I think it was a bad move, there wasn't an emergency, and you won't have my vote if, if we come, if it comes to vote tonight.
Okay. John Mountain, are you out there?
I think he lost his audio.
Oh, we'll give you a minute. Well, for me, it, yeah, I mean, while we're waiting, it just seems like the four weeks, you know, really, we, we probably have the safeguards in place through this written agreement. At the same time, a four-week extension of a moratorium to put, to do a process we intend to do, or seem quite likely to do, seems like the safe, the smart, the most responsible thing for us to be doing in our role to look out for the health and the welfare of the towns.
I go back to, to what Tanya said, though, who was on the previous board, it was never an emergency until somebody stepped forward. I think it's, it's really bad form to suddenly call it an emergency. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, it's the, it's the legal term we have to use in this situation, but it was brought to my attention, and you can disagree with me, but I, and you do, and that's fine. And, um, I'm totally comfortable with the decision I made, and I would have gone six months, or longer, if needed, but I also feel like we don't have to go that long. We went five weeks, and I think at the time you voted for it, and I think at the time it made sense, I don't regret your vote, you just changed your mind, that's fine. But, um, I feel like where we're at now, four more weeks is the best of our, oh, the best of both, quite honestly. John Mountain, you out there?
He actually fell off the meeting altogether now.
Oh, did he? Good, someone read that.
So really, we shouldn't be using chat, we're not even sure why it's active.
Oh.
Um, and Macy unfortunately can't seem to take it down over there, so we, I would say I'm happy to message him, but we should not be referencing chat in WebEx.
Okay. Did he not call into this, with his phone or something?
He was called in, so I'll see.
Well, while we're waiting, um, as you know, I said I'm fine with not extending the moratorium, I've kind of reconciled all those problems in my own head. I'm also okay with going four more weeks, because there's no applicant. I guess to me, it's a win-win either way, so I'm in a good position. But I, if it came up to give it four more weeks, I would vote yes, because it doesn't matter to anybody or to my, you know, I think, until April, we're good, right?
Yeah, April 25th, it'll go to the PC.
So April 25th, if, if I'm, uh, conceptualizing that right, that's like eight weeks.
I, I think I'm wrong, I'm saying that date, fourth, fourth Wednesday of April, sorry, check my math, April 26th, can't remember.
Well, I mean, I, why can't we just do it until we get that ordinance passed? We don't have to wait for the planning.
That's all that we're proposing here, no.
Oh, yeah, no, oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. All we're proposing is extending it until our, our March 21st meeting, which is four weeks from tonight, and so the moratorium, because the moratorium presently ends on tomorrow, on the 22nd, we would extend it four weeks to March 22nd, and yeah, and March, by March 21st, we would bring the PUD ordinance in front of us, and it wouldn't have to be, it wouldn't be an emergency, um, and we would look to pass that safeguard, which I feel like we have a lot of support for, but there's four weeks.
Again, just weighing community interest and community risk against individual interest and individual risk, it seems to me that we satisfy both.
Right.
Very effectively by extending the moratorium until we pass ordinance language that puts this proposal into law. We satisfy both.
Protects the individual and the community.
That was my last, my last desperate pitch to Tom.
Are we waiting for John?
Not by him.
I don't know where John's coming back on, and I thank you, I prefer noting the comment, I can, I can read it, I mean, it's not for fur, but he did say that he's open to letting the moratorium end tonight and building code in line.
But I am, uh, I'm undecided. I would, uh, prefer to think it over, um, at least for a restroom break.
All right, I think that's good.
Let me make one more, one comment, though. As I've maintained throughout this entire moratorium, um, I have struggled to understand the gravity of the emergency nature of it.
Sure.
And that is why I, uh, argued to shorten from six months to, what I was initially hoping for was one meeting, so that I, that would give me time to make a, a more deliberate consideration of whether it's actually an emergency or not. I'm still there and not, um, perceiving an emergency. I do hear the arguments, and I, I'm moved by the arguments that have been made by the public and by Eric, and within all of those arguments, I appreciate that our job is to make the right decision for the good of Netherlands. With that said, um, is it an emergency? I, I'm not convinced that it's an emergency, and, um, you know, we've had an indication that, um, somebody would like to consolidate lot lines who owns a lot of property in, in the CBD, and therefore, um, it's good for us to consider if, if there's an emergency or not. We have considered whether or not there's an emergency. I think that there are some really, uh, beneficial updates to the code that we can do that I've, that we've presented here, um, that I would like to see happen, and with those, and, and even with those, with or without those, I'm still not convinced that we're facing an emergency. If somebody on lot number five was able to build something ugly use by right, I don't think that would be the end of the world. All the rest of those lots that Ron is asking to consolidate are subject to a PUD already, and that particular small strip is relatively small compared to Ron's entire property holdings, and if Ron were to die and someone were to take those over, Ron is already planning to do that on PUD anyway. So we're guarding against a very hypothetical situation where Ron dies suddenly, sells it suddenly, and somebody comes forward with a building application suddenly. All of that would have to happen extremely quickly, um, you know, before we could even pass this, uh, proposed amendment to our code that, that we've suggested, um, and I just don't see that happening, it doesn't scare me, it doesn't, it's not an emergency in my opinion. Hitting a gas line in the middle of a residential neighborhood is an emergency, a wildfire is an emergency, life and death situations are emergencies, that's where.
It's, it's the legal term we got to use.
I understand.
I know it freaks people out, but.
I, I understand.
The word's a bummer, maybe we could change it.
I understand, and.
Can we just call it tight turnaround moratorium? That's all it is.
Timeout, moratorium.
Timeout.
Timeout.
I mean, that would be great, because that's all it is, it was the, it was the legal term we had to use, and I, I.
I understand.
Did Jesse finish his comment, though?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so, like I said, um, I have been moved by Eric's arguments particularly, um, very well-stated everything you've said, Eric, and, and also the public, and, uh, this is on our agenda as a, as a discussion item, we have some action items on here, um, I don't know how I'm going to vote if Eric's, uh, motion is forthcoming, I would very much appreciate some time to sit with all the comments, sit with Eric's comments, um, at least go, go, go to the bathroom first.
If I can make just one follow-up on what you said, Jesse, uh, which is that, everything that you said there may be true, right? The problem is, is that we can't guarantee it, right? So there are ways to build use by.
Nothing can be guaranteed.
Well, sure. I mean, when you're talking about wildfire and all those sorts of things, sure, yeah, nothing can be guaranteed, but we do have things within our powers, right, to make things more secure, right, for the town. We should be using those tools if we can use those tools, right? So there are developments that could be built on that property, regardless of any individuals, right, who currently own it, that, that would be used by right, right? Just because the, well, I mean, anything could be built, right, under the, under what is used by right, right? I mean, just because there are plans that exist by current owners that would require a PUD, doesn't mean that's what's going to happen, right? And so, if we allow the lot line dissolution and we don't end up passing code that requires the PUD, we've put ourselves at risk for no, for no material reason whatsoever, to hurt no one, it makes no sense.
Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and see if John Mountain can materialize. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and see if John Mountain can materialize. When, can someone out there online, can you let me know if you hear me talking?
I hear you.
Yeah, I hear you, too.
Great. Thank you both. Oh, gosh. John, I may have just asked you this. Are you there?
So I know John was kind of doubling up on his phone. I don't know. John, are you there? Or maybe you're coming to the community center? Not quite sure.
We can't hear you if you're talking. It's star six on your phone.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Awesome.
Perfect. I'm so sorry, you guys. I am at the front door of the community center to avoid any more technical.
You can come around to the south side, right outside the, oh, never mind. Someone's coming to get you. Stay where you're.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very exciting meeting, John. Glad you're going to be here.
Be here. Very glad to be here. Thank you so much. Yeah. I appreciate you. No, it's actually not that. It's still the summer.
Guys are hot, Mike. Can you go ahead? Hey. So Tanya, John Mountain is here in person now. And John, you can sign off online. You are signed in online still. I won't do that. Great. Well, welcome back, everybody. We are continuing with this discussion item on the subdivision ordinance. And we are really discussing, you know, where we'd be on extending the moratorium for weeks till March 22nd to see that everything is completed with regards to the PUD. To change the ordinance that gives us the PUDs on any projects, you know, after a lot of consolidations. So with that, I'll open it up again.
Well, so we heard from everyone but John, right?
John and maybe Nicole. I don't know exactly what I.
Nicole and I said I'm undecided.
Okay.
First buddy. There we go.
I mean, do you want, since you're out, I mean, I think Jesse's undecided.
Tom is decided.
Yeah, I guess we should all just say it to.
Yeah. I mean, just to be perfectly, completely clear, I intend on making a motion to move this from a discussion item to an action item. I agree with this proposal. I think it's a good idea. But I think we should put it in place in what I would consider to be the correct order. And that is, we continue the moratorium until the PUD language is written, we implement the PUD language and code, and lift the moratorium, right, so that things just happen in a copacetic manner. That is my proposal. I'm going to make a motion to move it to an action item so that I can then propose to do that.
And then let's just go around and tell.
And that will require six out of seven votes in order to extend the moratorium.
It would require six out of seven, and people can, I feel like, you know, I was really ready to surrender, or not surrender, but to, surrender is kind of what I felt like when I was like, but I was ready to just compromise and listen to the majority. Or listen to, you know, not the majority, but enough of the trustees. And also respect the fact that there was good compromise that got us to a place where I could just, you know, let go of the moratorium, you know, or just agree to the fact that it was not going to work. And, and yet I do see the wisdom in these extra four weeks of, since we are going to have that anyways, that we need to vote, we have to send the PUD request to the planning commission. They will get it on February 8th. They will, no, March 8th, sorry. Right? Oh, emergency. Oh, 15 days. So, okay.
No, that's the 15 days of the public hearing here. So the planning commission is yet to be set.
Okay.
But we will notice.
They'll set an date.
For the March 21st meeting. That public hearing notice has to be for the planning commission.
Got it. So not 15 days before their meeting. So between now and the 21st of March, the planning commission would meet. They would do what they need to do with regards to passing the PUD on an ordinance.
We could, just clarification, we could break them apart and adopt 17 separate from 16 and handle them, and 17 could come to you next week, or next meeting on the.
On the 7th, in two weeks.
You're breaking it up, but.
And again, we're adding more work for no reason. There's no actual reason to do that.
Right.
Other than, other than a kind of conceptual idea of whether or not it's an emergency. But that's the only reason, right? There's no material impact to anyone.
Well, I would say there is to Ron.
No, there isn't. Ron has already said he's not going to be presenting that before that time anyway. So we're not materially affected anyway. It would be before Ron even submits his application to go to the planning commission. Like, this is, we would be done with it all.
And it just keeps us in that timeout mode to protect us from any other unknowns while we get these, our ducks in a row. And four weeks from now, we do have the time for it to go through the PC to come back to us. We don't need, we don't need emergency moratorium, just, or we don't need a super majority. We just need a majority.
Okay. So was this all for my benefit?
Yeah, because we didn't know what you heard and didn't hear.
I am so sorry. I want to apologize to everybody. Time is one thing that we can't. I am so sorry. I want to apologize to everybody. Time is one thing that we cannot manufacture more of. And I had a technical issue. I teach in Boulder, which I've actually just moved tonight, so this will be the last time this happens because of me. Thank you, you guys for recapping this for me. I, I wanna touch on a couple of things. I have been mildly obsessed with doing some research, and it's much to my, the lack of integrity myself and my word to only work five to seven hours on this a week. And one thing that's pretty amazing about this town is the ability for the town and the mountaineer to archive information. So I've found a lot of information. Historically, there've been, you know, concerns from the town historically over other businesses, you know, applying for liquor licenses, for example, in 2011, Salto applied for a liquor license, and there were a number of voices that spoke up. I see and hear a lot of concern in this town with regard to keeping it a sanctuary, you know, of sorts. It's, it's a beautiful place to live. It's, it's wonderful in its silence in the middle of the night. You can almost hear the ruffle of owl's feathers as they fly overhead. It's an amazing place to be. I love it. And I think that I understand a lot of the underpinning concerns with regard to change. On another note, I also see a lot of benefit to change. And one of the things I found with all that research was a lot of Ron Mitchell's name interlaced with the town. You know, care in provisioning, in, you know, putting dahlias, planting flowers in town to make it more beautiful. And, you know, putting a considerable amount of his time and expense into supplying the town with, with many things that seemed, seemed to be indicative of a character that would not be rapacious in his intent in doing business with the town. And I'm not hearing that from the general consensus of people who are, in my opinion, necessarily opposed to going too fast with this project. So in, in the spirit of embracing business ideals, I would be very much for letting the moratorium end tonight. And allowing for us to consult with the people we need to consult with to help guide the actual development and building of, of the structure, also working with the code language to, to fix the PUD provisions. But I think underpinning, underpinning all of this, in my experience, is the concern for an, an interest coming in in a time when we've stagnated and allowed no change to happen and forcibly doing what we don't want to have done to this town. I don't think I get that impression in working with Ron, and I'd like to embrace his business ideas, but also help shape them if we can. You know, I'm not saying I'm qualified to personally, but I think with the help of consulting and the help with, you know, the great minds that we have here, we can develop the legal code in line with Ron's efforts, but also be open armed to his intent to make this a better place to live in, you know, from a tax-based perspective, from ease of business expansion perspective. I, just seeing what's going on right now with one business trying to develop an idea on Snyder Street. There is a lot of mess in trying to recalibrate the existing infrastructure, and it's a big deal to do so. And there's no agility in that, whereas perhaps with, you know, a consensually built structure that's large enough to accommodate many businesses simultaneously, we can welcome many businesses a little bit easier. So that's, that's my opinion, but that's my thoughts on this. And again, I really appreciate all the concern. I'm, I'm hearing great points on both sides. I'm not hearing, you know, I'm not hearing necessarily just the intent to be contentious in this. I, I hear a lot of thought put into it, so that's the thought that I put into it. And, you know, I wanna, I want, I wanna be helpful to the town, but I wanna also think about this as a human and have my own thoughts leading into this. And I've experienced big business coming into small towns. And yes, they do have an army of lawyers, and yes, they can bulldoze anything they want to and do a lot of things that the town may not agree with. And I don't see that happening here, so that's, those are my thoughts. So to be clear, what's being proposed doesn't stop any of that from happening at all, and in fact, doesn't even delay it. Right? All that's being proposed puts into place a public process that is coherent, right? Rather than what is currently being proposed in this discussion item, which is incoherent, right? It's a good idea, but it is fundamentally incoherent, right? It says we might do this in order to do this. I'm saying what we should do is guarantee that we do the P U D requirement before the moratorium is lifted, which delays nobody at all. No one is delayed. By their own, by their own statements and admission, no one is delayed. So we're not harming anybody, individual or otherwise. And we are also not putting the community in any kind of risk by simply extending the moratorium until we finish this discussion items process as it is laid out here, which everybody in this room agrees with. I, I see the sense in that. I really do, now that you, you put, you put it that way, Eric.
I, I would like to just, we've got a lot of business to cover still tonight.
I moved, uh, moved this to an action item for all of the intentions that I have laid out previously.
I will second that.
Remind me, do we have to vote to move it to an action item, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Macy, please.
Trustee Mountain.
I support that.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Kooms Ismael.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
No.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
And Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
Thank you.
I now move. Wait, do we have to take public comment? We do. On, it's, it's an action item now.
Okay.
Thank you. I would ask if anybody has any public.
I mean, really, a lot of folks have commented in a way that, that has gotten us to this. So is there any extra public comment on the fact that we are now moved to action item to extend the moratorium? Hearing done? We'll move ahead.
Process is good. I move to extend, can I say the moratorium? Is there?
Kathleen Chafai has her hand up.
Kathleen, when you're ready. We can't hear you yet.
She may need to call in.
Is it okay if I give Trustee Kooms Ismael draft language?
Yes, please. Kathleen, speak up when you are, unless we can't hear you yet. Give you one more minute. So I put the timer down for a minute, we're at 45 seconds, so at that point, I think we will end.
She's lowered her hand.
Okay, thanks Kathleen.
All right, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve an emergency ordinance drafted by the town attorney that will extend the moratorium established by ordinance number 835, adopted on January 17th, 2023, until March 22nd, 2023. No other change to ordinance number 835 is intended except for, except for the intention for the extension of the date, excuse me. And that is with the purpose of amending town code as proposed in this as originally a discussion item before the moratorium is lifted.
Thank you. I will second that.
Someone's taking notes, right?
So we have a motion and a second, I mean, I made the second to extend. We have a motion and extension, we have a motion and a second to extend the moratorium for four more weeks to March 22nd. And that would be the only change to ordinance 835 is the extension, the end, the extension end date. We're ready for the call.
Okay. Trustee Kooms Ismael.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
No.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling. Trustee Sterling.
No.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
No.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And Mayor Billy.
Yes. So the motion fails as an emergency, also known as timeout moratorium. It fails. And so the moratorium will end tomorrow, and. Who's counting? Geez, yeah, I, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean. Well, and I will say, you know, sure, I mean, I, I am frustrated. I would like to have seen it extended. And, and I would also, I would say though that, you know, we do have a plan in place with this P U D. Some, 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 you know, I'm, I'm definitely gonna validate that the five weeks brought some good things out. You know, our meeting two weeks ago, Tanya and I drafted the name, I got a good discussions going. We ended up having, you know, the open meeting with Ron at the library. We've got the ideas for this, the meeting, a lot of constructive meetings have happened. Last week, and we have this idea for, you know, putting the P U D in place and creating this team to change the code. So it hasn't been a waste, it hasn't been a waste, and I do agree that we would have been better served to extend it, but that's a moot point now, so.
Can I just say, we still need to discuss, I hate to say this, the, the committee that was part of the.
Thank you for saying that, because yes, we do. So we need to talk about the second question before the board, which is forming the committee and. What process would the B O T like to put in place for building the team that would work on additional town regulations for the C B D?
I would like to see a professional planner consulted.
Yeah.
Agree.
And not just like asked a few questions over Zoom.
Yeah, I know we had talked to Bob Widener when he was, I mean, Jesse had asked him point blank if he would help us with this, you know, because that is really his forte. And I asked him point blank, he said he'd be happy to, so, you know, there's one possibility, and.
The trouble is, is no one's gonna move that fast. Nobody's gonna move as fast as this timeline suggests.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Tiger team is not the P U D. It's, it's more for working on September 16th.
For it in general, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we, I mean, we, we do, I mean, you know, people, when we first talked about this team two weeks ago, two people texted me and said they'd be part of it. So, and we know, we know there's interest in, in my mind, you know, the talent, Miranda is essential.
But in the meantime, we have to process applications as they come. We can't, we're, we're not waiting. So as applications come, we have to process them.
Applications of people that want to be.
Do anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Correct, yep. We do.
So I, I agree with the timeline of in one week, as a public can join in one week, and in one week we develop a committee and set up a timeline for meeting. I, I feel like she said March 3rd. I think that's a week from now.
Oh, I guess. The thought was to release a request for like interest statements tomorrow due Friday. It will come before you on March 7th for you to review and then select who you would want on the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda think that's how fa, I kinda think that's how fast we need to be moving. Uh, this is, this needs to move, we need to, whoever's in this committee needs to be committed to meeting, you know, once or twice a week and, and really grinding it out. And that's, it's not, this isn't like a, do you guys, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, yep, definitely. It's, it's kind of what, you know, we asked for when we talked about the champion in two weeks ago to do this, or whatever it was.
And I, I'm happy to be on this committee, and I know other people are as well. I'm not sure the, we need somebody like to lead it. I'm not a leader. And we also, I do, at this point, I think we also should be interviewing for a professional to facilitate. But we don't have to wait for that, is what I'm getting at.
Right, so we can announce it tomorrow, and we want, you know, interest statements into us by Friday, March 3rd, so it's like a week and a half, you know, 11 days or whatever. But 10 days, but yeah, we, we need to probably figure out the, not probably, we need to figure out the makeup, the specific makeup we need. We definitely want a consultant, we have one potentially. We could reach out to more if, if people want to. I'm content with Bob Widener, I'll be perfectly honest, given our experience with him a couple of weeks ago.
Question, was Bob Widener also, did he have the, the market specialist? He's not, yeah, those are two different things. I would also be interested in having, besides the planner, having a market specialist to consult with. I know we just keep adding the bill, but, because that's another piece that we'd have to work through is the funding for it as well. But a market specialist so that they can consult with us on what types of potential business based off time and now and all of that, that they would suggest goes into our C B D. So not just the planner, but.
A market specialist. And then my thoughts is, in my mind, as I sketch it out, two B O T members and, you know, two, two people from the P C, two people from D D A, I mean, I can just see some value in different boards being on it and then opening it up to, to people in the community, to people in the community as well.
And there's probably, I think there's a little bit more thought process we'd want to put into it rather than just putting it out tomorrow. There's some criteria probably that we'd want to articulate, like what exactly gets you selected? I don't know that, you know, we've really put some thought process to that.
Maybe, maybe we could.
About no one with any, you know, specific private financial interest on, on the committee, how about that?
That would be.
That could be one of them.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good one. What we could do maybe is tomorrow, announce that we're going to put this out on Friday, and it gives us a couple of days to sketch out parameters of what we're putting out criteria-wise, or we could just wait and put it on on Friday, whenever Friday is the 24th. Or tomorrow, we could say we, we will be, you know, putting out criteria and specifications for this team we're putting together. We will putting out, you know, parameters around that and opening up applications for letters of interest starting, you know, Friday, February 24th. And they will be doing one week on March 3rd. It's just an idea, so we get some communication out tomorrow, but give ourselves some time to really do it. We probably won't do well right now.
So say that again, put a communication out tomorrow, and then.
Just, just as simple that, that, you know, we're creating, the B O T has decided, you know, as part of, you know, the tandem effort of bringing our code in line with the comp plan and the Division 2030 that we will be composing a team of people, you know, from, from within town government and, and also just residents, folks outside the government, town government. And we will be looking for applicants. We're gonna, over the next two days, we'll be establishing criteria, specifying things, and we will open up the, the application process on, on Friday, February 24th. And, and it will be a one-week process to turn in your letter of interest, and they'll be due on Friday, March 3rd. And interviews and selection will happen on Tuesday, March 7th.
What, but who's, who's specifying this criteria?
We got a little work to do between now and Friday for people in the B O T that are interested. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, we could do it right now. I don't have a sense, that's gonna go very well. We got a little work to do between now and Friday for people in BOT that are interested, I mean, I don't, I mean, we could do it right now, I don't have a sense that's going to go very well.
Voting on it. In a, in a meeting in front of the public, not.
Sure.
Not randomly coming out with criteria.
Okay.
Shadily.
No, okay, no, we can, we can do that, we can do that right now, and we can make it simple. So go ahead, let's put some, let's spit out some criteria, we've got, I mean, just, just to lay out the rest of the night.
I mean, that's the thing, I don't think we have, I mean, considering this agenda, this is too much for us to do all in one night. I mean, this is a.
Okay, fine, we could play.
Okay, so are we saying two people from the public?
So basically.
This work, so I'm sorry, this work needs to be done in advance, it should be in the aim, the criteria, suggested criteria should be in this aim. Language, suggested language for the code amendments should be in the aim, we are doing things back fucking asswards.
That would have been the.
Well, and part of it was that it was a discussion item and so.
And it shouldn't have been. It should not have been.
Well, you moved it to an action item.
I did, indeed, I did.
Yeah, I think, I think we gotta just go with where we are now, and I agree, like, we can bump all that out.
But we're trying to make another action item out of this, right now.
We don't have to have.
Yeah, and it was meant to just be a discussion, Eric, really, that's all it was meant to be, and so.
Trying to figure out how, how we, and what we can do is, is plan on the 7th now to begin that process of creating the criteria in front of the public, which is, which I'm fine with, it just slows us down a bit.
Can somebody write a proper aim for this, please?
So what we can do is we can, uh, March, no, sorry, next, next.
March 7th.
March 7th.
Next meeting, that will be when we'll create the criteria, I, I agree, you know, in, we'll write an aim.
Well, in my opinion, the onus is on, the onus is on those who called for the moratorium and those who called emergency, those, those who.
Please, please, oh, please describe your loss.
The onus is on you and Eric essentially. Not, in my opinion, no, because I'm not convinced that we had an emergency, that's why I shot it down.
But we're not talking even about the emergency moratorium right now, we're onto a completely different item.
So there's, there's nothing there anymore, so there's no there there. We can move on to the next thing.
Well, but I think this talk about creating a team is, which is what we're talking about.
We need a team, you guys, if we don't do that.
There was a lot of buy-in on that when we started talking about that.
I agree that we should have a team, I'm just saying that I don't want to take flak from Eric for not having a proper ma- aim.
Well, stop being that way, come on, you guys.
I mean, I'll take flak, I don't care about flak about the name.
Okay, well, let's keep on with the agenda, it's 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, well, okay, March 7th, I won't be there, you guys are going to come up with a team, I want to be on it for the record, A. Okay, and, and then I think you shouldn't, you should have two for each group and come up with the criteria for determining that.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, so here's the deal, we're, we're gonna, Ron wants to go, just a sec, I just want to set this up, I'm gonna, in a second here, move to extend, but. Ron would like us to vote on his rezoning, and so we will definitely be doing the rezoning tonight, it looks likely we will move the sheriff. Whenever I talk to Jennifer Miranda, and the, and the BOT retreat discussion, and the sheriff action item to a later meeting. And the rezoning may or may not be done by 11, given the public comment, so if not, we will extend that to another meeting. Um, I move to extend the meeting to continue on, and I'm just going to go for it, and to extend it to 11, and it won't go any later, because that's as late as it's supposed to. Looking for a second, folks.
One second.
Uh, yeah, this is Tanya.
Thanks, you got a motion, a second to extend the meeting, basically?
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Kimzizma?
No.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Mahol?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So. A name will be written for the March 7th meeting on the subject. So we're going to go from here on to our. First scheduled action item of the night and likely only action item of the night, which is. The First Street, uh, 100 East First Street rezoned, and I think it's, I assume it's Miranda, would you?
Do we do a script or?
Oh, you sure did, sorry. Lost in the shuffle. Here this evening for a public hearing on a rezoning request. Public hearing is not open for the purpose of considering the rezoning application. Miranda, would you please present the report?
Before that, do you?
Yeah, actually, I, I wanted to speak up, I.
Thanks.
Managed, thank you, Billy, I managed to join the planning commission meeting that Ron was at. I missed my cue, you mentioned Billy, that I should probably back out of that meeting before he had a chance to, to go in front of them with his plan. Uh, I did catch that. I've since come to my own thoughts on that. And I'm pretty sure it's not been a non-public discussion for many people, including the board members here. But I also do realize that you lose integrity and respect by the bucket full, and you only gain it by the teen spoonful, so I wanted to. Talk with the board for just a second and just say that I did, I was part of that meeting, and if there's going to be. Conflict with regard to thoughts about my integrity on voting on this. I don't want to try to battle my way out of that, so my, my ask to the board is to consider me as. An independent thinker and somebody who can weigh in on this responsibly and without allowing other input to taint my, my thought process. But also I respect and admire everybody that I've heard speak on this board for various reasons, and I, I do not want to lose. A shred of integrity, so. I guess I, I just wanted to ask that. I get a unanimous sort of consensus that it's okay for me to vote on this. Based on the fact that in some people's mind, that could be a conflict of interest, or it could also be possibly a slip of integrity, so.
I think it's your call.
I know.
If you, I mean, I mean, I don't know, we were just talking whether, it's up to you, I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate this and I'm. Happy to give you my opinion if other folks want to, but.
I would love to hear it, yeah, and that's my thinking is, you know, I'm just getting to know you guys, and I don't want to start on the wrong foot, so.
Yeah, I mean, I gave you the heads up in advance, the PC meeting, that, oh yeah, you, you know, attended, that'll be cool, and Tom was there and he left. And I was going to get on later about fence sites, so I just was hanging out with the kids and doing stuff and not even hearing, Miranda was texting me afterwards, so I missed it. And I said, you want to pop off for that part, and it was, I get it was an oversight, and then you really.
We weren't, we weren't even informed at this point that it was a quasi judicial issue when that meeting was held. I wasn't told until the day after. So I think, in my opinion, John Mountain's totally fine, I listened to the meeting today and I heard his voice on there asking a question, but I certainly didn't think it was a big deal myself.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine, I mean, you asked some clarifying questions.
Not at all, anyway.
And it would be, I mean, Kanye brings up, actually, everyone else, give your opinion and.
Good with me, John?
Okay, thank, I, I didn't mean to put you guys on the spot, I know it's my decision, but there's, there's two things to be weighed here, we have a lot of work to do. Apparently, a ton of work to do, and I want to be considered a team member and not somebody who's going around the process to try to get stuff done, so.
No, I don't, I, I don't think it was, I mean, just so you know, I just think it was kind of a. Space move, you, you, not space, but you know, like, you didn't realize it, I had given you the heads up, you didn't realize it, Miranda didn't realize you were on, and so you were kind of in there. But Tanya brings up a point, and I think Tanya, there have been some emails with her and Miranda about, like, if the BOT can be better informed, the quasi judicial stuff going to. The PC in advance, it will help us to steer clear.
So one thing that would be helpful for the record and. General understanding in terms of listening to what happens at the planning commission meetings. Related to a quasi judicial matter and participating in that before the item comes to the Board of Trustees is a question of prejudgment. And making up your mind at the planning commission meeting. Which way you would vote before it comes to the Board of Trustees, so I think. The question is whether you have prejudged the application. Such that you wouldn't be able to hear the evidence tonight to make a decision based on, on the evidence tonight.
No, that makes perfect sense, thanks for explaining that, Attorney Man- Madison, I think, um. Yeah, the, I, the question that I was rolling around in my brain, you know, while we talked about this was. You know, the, the two sides of the coin are, what's my responsibility, you know, I took this job for a reason, I didn't take it to sidestep the responsibility of making the decisions. And on the other side, you know, maintaining an integral relationship with everybody, and I feel. I feel pretty good after listening to everybody talk tonight that I'm not. Being seen as somebody who would be slippery in that aspect, so.
How do you feel about whether you've already decided where you're at on this thing, that's what Jennifer asked.
I still have a lot of questions, so, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely, I would say that my, my decision could definitely be swayed tonight, for sure. My, sorry. I, yeah, I, I have an idea as to what is being asked, but I could be completely wrong. So, and, but I don't necessarily know that that wouldn't be the case with everybody here, because I don't think this is a non-public discussion item. Am I, is that wrong, am I mistaken on that? That's a.
Well, I mean, I knew, I knew what the subject matter was and, you know, today I listened to the recording of it, first time, so.
Okay. I guess. That being said.
The word sway is kind of a funny one, but it's your choice.
It is, yeah, I.
So then the other question is whether you, you'll be fair and unbiased in judging the application tonight.
That.
And I guess it's a, it's a yes or no, really.
That's a, that's a definite yes for me, but I do, you know, like, I do have to be perfectly honest in that, I, I think I have some idea as to what this is about, but I could be wrong.
Well, we all do, because we read the agenda and some of us listened to the meeting today, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
So, Miranda? Are we there? Yeah, I think so, I'm a little boondoggle at the moment.
All right, let's do this, so tonight before you is a consideration of a rezone application for 100 First Street. 100 First Street is often referred to as 100 East First Street, but it is officially addressed as 100 First Street. The applicant, which is the Netherlands Central Business District Redevelopment LLC, is represented by Ron Mitchell. And he is looking to rezone from high density residential to central business district. Couple of things I want to draw attention to is really the difference between the two. So high density residential is really what is allowed is residences and parks. Under a central business district, you're looking at more of commercial activity, parks, marijuana potentially through SRU as well as industrial. But residential on its own is not allowed, potentially mixed use. It's also important to note yard in bulk, under high density residential, there are yard in bulk requirements in terms of setback lot size cover, in lot coverage. Where in the CBD, you can obviously build out the entire footprint. For this lot itself, the lots to the east on the south side are all high density residential. The lots to the west and north are central business district, and the lots across the street, but yet to the east, are neighborhood commercial. Um, the applicant is seeking though for a rezone to high density residential, since that is what abuts to the lot on the west side. Provided some pictures in here, so just kind of a current understanding of the use right now, it is a parking lot, there are 20 parking spaces, which is what is allowed. Anything more would require a special review use, which is why the applicant has held it to 20 parking spaces. Previously, this is a space where the owner has grown hops, and there's also kind of a, it abuts the rivers, it's undeveloped. And so that, there's kind of some picnic tables down there, but that is in a floodplain on the south side. Under high density residential, this lot can be developed for residential use. In a Ron's redevelopment plan, there was an initial proposal for a 16 residential unit that's on the north side. And then a park that's on the south side, as well as kind of a drainage pond. When asking the applicant why he's decided to move away from that, he has indicated that the businesses have expressed a desire to keep that as parking. Therefore, he has chosen to no longer develop it as housing and keep it as a parking lot. He also has acknowledged that at times there have been conversations about using this as a secondary bridge access location. However, he's made no formal commitment to that, he just is aware that there have been discussions about that. If it was to be rezoned to central business district.
She didn't even bring up like Kayla's pond thing.
The applicant has noted that he, there are certain desires for how to use the parcel. Obviously, if it's rezone though, anything that is used by right could happen there, so while the applicant is stating he wants to do a parking lot, that's paid parking. Uh, potentially provide an easement for drainage for town and create a park. It really needs to be understood that if you choose to, if the board chooses to approve the rezone, some, it could be used, used by right for anything else. So the applicant's proposal specifically is increasing the parking lot, so there's more than 20 spaces, and he would charge for that under the paid parking, a proposal that he'd already spoken about. On the south side would be a mini park with picnic tables and chairs that is already allowed, used by right in high density. As well as a retention pond for stormwater runoff in town with seeking easement. When you're thinking about this rezone, it's really important to weigh it out to the comprehensive plan. And as staff, we acknowledge that the comprehensive plan talks about it all. Talks about the importance of housing, especially the importance of housing in high density residential zones, as well as the importance of housing downtown. So that's not lost, we know we're doing a housing needs assessment, there is a general understanding by the community that there is a need for housing. Which is what would be allowed under the current zone where it's at. There's also an acknowledgement that there's a need for parking. What's interesting about the comprehensive plan is that actually, back then 10 years ago, it was determined that there was no parking issue. Where we're in a very different situation today, where I think many of us can agree that we do have a parking problem. So you do have, you know, consideration here that, that what is being proposed is a parking lot. The comprehensive plan also does talk about the importance of parks and recreation spaces, as well as the Parks Recreation Open Space Trails Plan talks about that. And the comprehensive plan has a whole section dedicated to drainage, so, you know, definitely recognize the complexity of this ask, because there are, all four components are touched on in the comprehensive plan. In our analysis though, you really need to consider these three criteria. Only one of the three criteria needs to be met for rezoning, but it is important to note. That for the purpose of establishing sound, stable and desirable development within the town, the rezoning of a land is to be discouraged. Rezoning should only occur if, should only be considered if it's one of these criteria. First, the land is to be rezoned, that is to be rezoned was zoned in error and as presently zoned is inconsistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan. The current owner has spoken detail about how this land has been used for other uses, he talks about it in his narrative. We have no proof of that, we have yet to be able to find that, so we cannot say if the parcel was zoned in error. The town comprehensive plan does cite the need for additional housing, therefore, the current zone of high density residential is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The second is the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public's interest to encourage redevelopment of the area. We do view this as a reasonable parcel to consider redevelopment. Recognizing that, you know, if rezone to CBD, you're creating more commercial opportunities, which is of interest as a part of the comprehensive plan. However, there's also a need for housing, and so again, bit of the complexity here. And something that the board will really need to weigh out is, is those two components. The neighbors, however, have expressed that they'd like to keep it high density residential, they feel that they've been involved in a lot of these redevelopment plans as they've come forward by the applicant. And up until recently, they've always had a housing component, and they do feel that that is what is needed. You also have businesses though, who have said they prefer it to be parking, so. said they prefer it to be parking. So for us, like, that criteria, you know, really is depending on how you weigh out public interest because I think you have across-the-board public interest for all the proposals before you. And the last is the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for community-related use, which is not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive plan, and that the rezoning will be consistent with policies and goals of the comprehensive plan. You know, again, you have, the comprehensive plan speaks to parking, open space, drainage, housing, all of those. They've been identified as, as pieces of the comprehensive plan, which can be met both under current high-density as well as central business district. We do have Mark Hall, who, oh, let me see, we have a bit of a sound issue, but Mark Hall has been hanging on with us strong all night long. He is your streets manager. He is here to answer any questions you have about drainage. We, we appreciate that Ron has offered an easement. We're not ready to make that commitment at this time. Mark would like to assess the issue as a whole. We definitely need to see the runoff, need to look at it, you know, addressing just one section of, of downtown's runoff is not going to address the entire problem. So he would like to spend some more time, and therefore, we're not saying no, but we are saying no, not right now. Nathan Scallik, our JVA engineer, went and looked at the drainage. His assessment is in your packet here for you to look at, but the drainage is a town issue. The applicant has offered a solution, but is not the only solution we'd like to explore. But, but again, Mark is here to answer questions. During the planning commission, they unanimously recommended denial of the rezone application. Specifically, they did not feel the application met the criteria for the rezone, and expressed concern that if the parcel was rezoned to CBD, that yes, you have an applicant telling you what he wants to do, but if the parcel were to say change hands, or the applicant were to change his mind, it does open up a different level of use by right on this parcel, and that was a concern of theirs. There's an ordinance before you tonight. If you do approve the rezone or deny, we would need that motion made, and there is recommended language for how to do that. That's it. And was your questions for staff? Specifically, I'd love to start with Mark, if there's any questions for Mark.
Yeah, any clarifying questions for Mark Hall? Thanks for being, thanks for hanging out there, Mark. We appreciate you sticking with us.
No problem.
Any questions for Mark specifically?
I guess I had, I do have two, I think. Listening to the PC meeting, I, I wonder if, if, two things. Was there, do you have any further input, re, you know, possible easement for stormwater drainage, like retaining pond? Is there, it sounds like you haven't made a commitment, but is, is there any, any, any further developments since the PC meeting? I'll just ask specifically. Can't hear you.
Mark, are you there? I would say we talked about it with our engineers last week, and really the feeling is, and Mark, I'll let you jump, jump in, but Mark is obviously new to his role. He was in the Parks Department before. He wasn't dealing with drainage last summer. It's very important that Mark puts his eye on this. And so while we do feel like Nathan has an understanding and we talk about it in our master infrastructure plan, it's really important that Mark looks at it. You know, we're not, again, we don't think it's a bad idea. It's just like, will it address the drainage as a whole? You know, it doesn't make sense to enter into an agreement like this if it's not resolving the entire problem. Mark, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing to add to that. I think I just kind of go into it a little bit further as far as with the master infrastructure plan, we kind of have already come up with a priority of what we wanted to work on this year. And then with this rezoning, we've kind of brought up a couple other things that are already a part of the plan as well that we want to deal with in the future that, based on when it was done, the priority wasn't given such a high standard to this area in particular. So I think just from the budgeting way as well, I mean, we're looking at well over a hundred grand worth of things that we would have to attend to, not just on the property we're talking about now, but also just first and second East Street alone as far as the drainage problems. So it's just a, it's a much bigger issue, I think, that we would have to deal with as a whole that we didn't really budget for.
And I do want to note that the applicant has said that, that, that the easement, and I'll let him clarify from off here, the easement's still on the table, whether it's a part of this rezone or not, but he did want you to be aware that, you know, in his current recommendation, you know, the easement and the retention pond, the way that could be developed, of course, that changes if you build a, a housing there. And so that's something, you know, that he wants to, for, for us to continue that conversation. So I don't think it needs to be a big piece of your decision, but did want you to know that that is, you know, part of his narrative, and we wanted to be able to answer any questions you might have about the drainage components.
Any more questions for Mark specifically?
So one, one quick question. Would the cost that you just mentioned, Mark, do you think that there's a possibility that could be recaptured through possibly partnering with the parking, like parking collections component, fees?
So the, the, that's a private, that would be a private lot, private collection of fees.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing town, town would not recoup any fees.
There'd be no partnership on that. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mark? I have another question for town staff, and I don't know if it's Mark or not, but Miranda, they also talked, you also talked in the PC meeting, I don't know if it's made any more headway, but, you know, when they talked about the possibility of number of homes, that would be, if you were to look at it residentially, number of homes that could be built in there because it's 52,000 square feet, which is like, you know, 13, 13, 13 high-density lots, but obviously you need space in there to move cars around and drive and roads and step back from the drainage. Was there any, any headways since then about actual number of homes?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for a staff to weigh in on. That's a developer decision.
Oh, okay.
We know how many homes he could build based on minimum lot size, but it's also in a floodplain on the north and south side.
Right.
So that, that, but I don't, I've never felt like that was appropriate for a town.
Yeah, because I heard it come up there, and I just didn't know if that, if anything went-
The applicant would have to determine how many homes he would be interested in developing if that were the case. But as it stands right now, the applicant, per our conversation, but the applicant can clarify, was, was not planning to build housing on this lot.
Okay.
We'll get to you in a moment, Ron.
Any other clarifying questions for town staff?
I guess just to be totally clear, solving the drainage problem isn't really contingent upon zoning.
No, it's not. Right. So we, it could be done regardless, but the applicant did note it as one of the, the components of why he's asking for the rezone.
Right. I'm just making, town staff isn't saying like, we can solve the drainage problem if we rezon it. Right. Just making clear.
It's a much larger, it's why we're kind of stuck in the bottom of the AM. It's a larger conversation.
Great. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
So if there's no more questions for staff, Ron, we'd like to give you an opportunity to present.
The plan is for parking right now. And in the event that we come to a conclusion that a parking garage gets built underneath, I think housing would be a good idea, a mixed use. And maybe I should have projected that in there, and maybe it could be a condition. I'm not sure. But mixed use on that lot would probably make sense because you would need all that parking if there was a 100-car parking lot or 300-car parking lot on the main block. So this addresses a current need. There were a lot of mistakes made this evening. The construction process of this thing is not five years. It's the whole process we're going to go through. That's going to take, it looks to me, like a year alone with a tiger team and, and design consultant and that sort of thing. So there's another reason too, that somebody might say that the, the idea of this retention pond was also to take the stormwater from that entire big block and run it through a culvert into this pond because you have to have a retention pond. But it's big enough and designed to service all the buildings on the other side of the street, on the south side of the street, as opposed to just my properties. It was an opportune place. It works well. It's been serviced now for six years, and it's functioning the way it's supposed to. So could be flexible in terms of the use down the road, but right now, it looks like we have a real substantial parking need, and, and that's what it would be if I'm in charge. That's what I would propose within the next year. Or actually, I would really like to do, I talked with Miranda about this, is just do a, working with the town on a cooperative team or something, an entire PUD for everything. Because the way they're purchased right now, their entire, their, it's planned to make everything work together. And if it doesn't work together, and if we try, if we try to do it piecemeal, we'll just get a mess. And we've got a mess now. Sounds like everybody's willing, willing to try and work on something. At least I, I don't know, some may just be sitting and saying, no, we're not going to do anything. But I don't think that's the majority opinion. So if you have any questions, I did make a supplemental offer that Miranda didn't cover, and do you have it? Could you read it to the folks?
Are you talking about your amendment in the narrative?
I don't know if you've read the-
They, they have it.
So that was to-
What, what is it?
It's to leave it as residential zoning, but add that you could have paid parking in a residential zone adjacent to a business zone.
I thought you said it wasn't possible in the planning commission meeting.
Well, it, it didn't come up in the planning commission because the neighborhood rejection was we want housing, period.
No, I, I heard somebody ask a question in the planning commission meeting, and they asked, is it possible that Ron could do paid parking and keep the same zoning? And the answer Miranda had said was like, no, it's not.
I got a text in the meeting from an attorney that they were asking about doing a deed-restricted plan, and he said, don't do that. Don't agree to that. Don't agree to anything until you really have a plan worked out.
Ron, let me clarify to trustee Corvalan's point. So as it's currently zoned, high-density residential, outdoor, commercial, eating, drinking, and other commercial activity is not allowed use by right. So I think what Ron is proposing here now is to change either that line in the use group table or add a separate line item for paid parking and allow it as use by right in residential zones. So you'd be looking at a Chapter 16 use group table change, which is what he's proposing, to keep the zoning as is, but change the use to allow paid parking.
And this would be a compromise with the neighborhood.
Okay. Can I ask you a question, Ron? I know you're still talking, so I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh, go ahead. If you have a question, go ahead, Tony.
So during, during that planning commission meeting, they had brought up several times to do kind of a compromise where you would agree that it would only be used for housing or, or parking, paid parking. Would that still be a possibility?
Yes, as long as you allowed it in the zone, but I wouldn't do it by deed restriction.
But as a, you know, like an extra constraint in this, like if, if it was zoned, commercial with this extra restraint on that, it's not necessarily, I mean, from the meeting, Miranda said it was, the lawyers said there was two ways to do it. One's a deed restriction and one was just an amendment to the approval. And I don't know what the difference was. And Jennifer spoke. You know what I'm talking about? Anybody remember?
I do, yeah. There was talk, there was a talk of a deed restriction, but yeah, it sounds like you're not-
There was also the talk where Jennifer was like, it doesn't have to be a deed restriction. It could just be, you know, an extra consideration added to, like, you know, saying if I put up a, if I said I approve Ron's change of zoning to commercial parking, but with, it only restricted to commercial, to, I'm sorry, parking or housing, like that. Am I wrong? I mean, I just listened to the meeting today, so it's kind of fresh in my mind.
Jennifer?
So the, the discussion of, of parking and housing was not part of the planning commission meeting?
Well, it was. It was. There was a whole-
Right, but not as part of, of restricting the lot to those two things. That wasn't part of the discussion. And it was only, the question was whether the, the applicant, Mr. Mitchell, would agree to restricting it to a commercial parking lot. And at that meeting, you said you didn't want to do that.
Well, it, it, there actually was comments about it.
That was by deed restriction.
Right. And so, but then the other thing would be a condition of the ordinance, that the, the-
Yeah, that's it.
The parking is only going to be, or the lot would only be used for commercial parking. And that's something that would be recorded on the property to limit it to that use.
I opened with a statement that eventually putting a residential building there would be just fine as long as there was parking on the main lot. In other words, this is city planning in terms of looking at the entire project as opposed to just this lot. So if a few years from now, there's a 100-car, 300-car parking lot across the street, you won't need that parking. So you could put housing there and have parking just for the residents if that was necessary. I'd still like to keep the, the park aspect of it for public use.
I love the park. Well, what about adding the constriction for parking and housing only? And/or you could put housing on top of the parking? I'm just, like, I'm wondering, I'm trying to find a compromise because what I really would like to see is a neighborhood commercial zoning on it, but since that's a spot zoning, it's not allowed. And I, and I'm just, or what Ron was suggesting is, is change it so that residential could do paid parking. I'm, I'm okay with that, too. I'm-
I tend to try to hit it. You change one sentence of the laws for parking or housing, you could park 50 cars there comfortably.
But Attorney Madson did point out that there is a, a component in the use group table that does say that any use that is not specifically permitted in this section shall be deemed a prohibited use. If a question arises as to whether a specific use does or does not fall within the express use category, an application may be made before the planning commission to determine as whether to determine, to, for a determination as to whether a specific use is permitted. Any decision by the PC may be reviewed by the Board of Trustees. So you could handle this kind of as a one-off situation.
Kind of like an SRU, I guess.
Yeah, it's just the provisions in the code because you can't always predict what uses you may or may not want. And they're not, you're not going to be able to have all of your uses outlined in your use group table. So, you know, paid parking isn't really outlined. It is a outdoor commercial use as, as the town has defined for your paid parking plan. But the question is whether that could be allowed in neighborhood or in the high-density residential.
And that was my offer of compromise with the neighbor.
But that then would, of course, affect all high-density residential zoned.
Yes.
Old Town.
Yeah, but literally, how many people have empty high-residential zones that they're going to turn into parking lots?
I mean, but that's, again-
I guess we'll find out.
I guess what it does- Yeah. It enables those residents to potentially charge for parking on their-
There are spots in Old Town where that would be a big hit.
Well, only like four, four times out of the year, you know, four times out of the year, and it would be welcomed probably, back when we used to have festivals anyway. But that's another story. So where are we going on this? What's the next step? Let, should Ron keep, is Ron, do you-
I want to know if there's more clarifying questions for Ron, first of all.
So, Ron, you are amendable to-
Here's the next step, Tanya. Let me, we just, any more clarifying questions for Ron at this point, and then it'll go into public testimony. Any questions for Ron from the trustees? And Tanya, if you had more?
Yeah, just to clarify, Ron, you would be amendable if we said, I approve this with the constraint that it would only be used for housing and/or parking?
As long as it can be paid parking.
Pay, okay. And/or housing and/or paid parking. You would be okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I think it's in your packet. There's a specific reason for having to have paid parking there. I've been audited by the IRS, and they have said that I can't take the costs of operating these parking lots unless there's income. these parking lots unless there's income. So they disallowed all of the expenses that I had to maintain those lots, including the park, which I can consider part of the parking, the cleaning, the grading, the snow removal, the picking up of dirty diapers and throwing them away every morning. All that sort of stuff was disallowed by the IRS. So I have to be able to charge for parking and have an income that the IRS can tax. Otherwise, uh, it won't work. I can't, I can't afford to maintain that, that few acre site as it is right now with public parking and no income. They, it's, IRS won't allow it.
Any, I have a question. Any other questions for Ron from the trustees and help feel free? So I have a question I just got to ask. So I was on the planning commission from summer of 2020 to summer of 2022. When your paid parking came to pass and came to us, um, and it was three, came to us three times, and it was, you know, it was a lot of work for you, a lot of expense, clearly. A lot of, you know, back and forth, public, threatened to sue us once. I mean, it was pretty exciting. And, and then, um, on the third meeting, we voted and we voted four to three, and there were seven of us to deny, you know, we, we recommended denying the applicant SRU for paid parking. It went on to the BOT. I can't remember if it was once or twice, but it got approved at the BOT. That was April of 2021. And I just don't like, and you never, you know, you've yet to sign the agreement. I just don't understand why, you know, almost 22 months ago, paid parking was approved in much of your other properties? And it seems like by now you could have gotten it going and generating revenue. I, I just, it, it, you know, I, you know, people talk about, well, he never gets anything done. I just, I, I'm curious why you never signed the agreement.
Okay, first off, at the time, uh, there were properties included that I didn't own and had options on them. And the, it was contingent on my electing those options. I did elect those options. I was, uh, so it was sort of messy. The second reason was that required me to use kiosks and meters. We're losing our bank and meters require a bonded individual to handle all this coin work. And I, nobody knew the bank was leaving until two or three weeks ago. So, but the fact is, the technology was changing so fast that license plate recognition software is come, was coming in. And as I looked it over and thought about these things, it didn't make sense to spend a lot of money on antique infrastructure. Nobody's using parking meters anymore. Nobody's using kiosks anymore. It's all done on your phone. And also, I, I mentioned this earlier, that I would like to work with the town and have one system for both of us. But I'm going to go ahead and do mine, even if the town doesn't pursue a paid parking policy relatively soon. I'm, I have to, I can't afford not to be able to offset the expenses. So I'm forced into doing it now. I didn't do it then for those reasons. And additionally, with the license plate recognition technology, the smaller lots can be included without having to have mechanical gates that open and close, having cards you stick into a machine that auto, uh, that activates the gate would mean putting a lot of electrical infrastructure in and expense that now you don't have to. So as that technology evolved, I kept going to parking conferences every year. And the, uh, license plate recognition software just keeps getting better and better. So that's, those are the three reasons that I didn't do it. I'll repeat, first one is that the infrastructure and cost of meters and kiosks. Second one is there were a lot of properties that were contingent, there were too many contingencies in the thing that made it an unwieldy, unwieldy document. And the third is that I could add all of the smaller lots. And the fourth actually is, I really want to work with the town in terms of doing a cooperative parking thing so that maybe there's just one price for all spaces for one period of time. Because if I charge different rates than the town does, it's just going to confuse the customer. And the whole idea of paid parking anymore is not really to make money. It's to generate turnover so that you get more customers going into the stores. They've long ago abandoned, abandoned the idea, you're going to make much money on it. Going to make your money from the sales tax by making the employees park four blocks away so that your customers come to you and you give them the places in front of your door. I can tell, tell you how many cars I watch go down First Street and they can't find a parking place because of the employees on First Street have got it all filled up by nine o'clock in the morning. Just go look yourself, you'll see it. Now, if you get them to understand, they're cutting their own throat. They're, and their business owners tell them all the time, go park further away, go park by the Quickmark, there's six spaces there. Do you ever see those spaces filled with employee cars? Nope, not at all. I drive by all the time. I buy my gas there. So that's why I didn't sign it. Better things were to come. And again, no matter what the naysayers say and complain about what I do or they don't like me, I own this property, I want to work with you. And if you want to work for somebody else, with somebody else, just tell me and I'll walk away. Okay, any question?
I do, I do have a real quick question for you, Ron. Thanks for explaining that. So as part of the contractual language, are you, are you feeling like you would be-
Who's speaking?
Sorry, Ron, this is John-
John Mountain?
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. The red shirt.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify. So are you saying that there needs to be better language about the technology that you're using?
Well, I want to eliminate the requirement in the contract that says I must put in parking meters.
Specific technology?
It was specifically a requirement.
Okay, I understand. Sorry, that was, that was my question. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions right now from the board to Ron? If not, we will, um, now is the time for public testimony. I'll ask for public testimony in favor of the application to speak first. Then I'll ask for public comment that is against the applicant, application. Individual speakers for each are given three minutes to speak. The timekeeping system that will track the time period for each speaker. Are there any members of the audience, we'll start here in the room, who wish to speak in favor of this proposal? It would seem that you would be then talking against it. Okay, I thank you. Okay, no, appreciate it. Are there any members of the audience, um, then speak up if you're in here and I missed you, but any members of the audience online, anyone attending online who would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Mayor Billy, you do have Kathleen who would like to speak in favor. I know it takes her a little bit to call him, but then David Seitz also raised his hand.
If David's ready, he could go first, just, I mean, if that works, just because, unless she's ready.
Uh, yeah, I'm ready. I think, uh, yeah, this is David Seitz. I live at Second and Snyder. I think a lot of weight should be given to the people who signed the petition in support of this. They're mostly the businesses on the south side of First Street and they, and they don't have any parking. So, you know, they're the ones who need it, and I think a lot of weight should be given to that. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it. Kathleen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Kathleen Chabai, I'm in support of, uh, changing this to be whatever it needs to be for Ron to have paid parking and to get more spaces. And I want to point out that the planning commission and specifically Jim Reese, after reviewing, say that, uh, we don't have a parking problem in Netherlands. So, um, I take what the planning commission says with a grain of salt because, uh, so many people have been on the planning commission and here we are with no additional parking provided by the town in Netherlands and detriment to the public parking that was graciously provided by Ron Mitchell for the last 30 years for free. So, um, I think we could solve this problem. And I agree with what David Seitz just said about taking into consideration that the businesses on the south side, uh, don't have any parking right now and really could use that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Appreciate it. Anyone else online in favor of, that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? If not, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back into the, um, room here for any, are there any members of the audience who wish to speak against this proposal? Roger? Start with Roger.
Roger Cornell, 998 Peak to Peak Highway, uh, planning commission member. I talked to Steve Williams, chair this afternoon. He's busy with the water main problem, or a water drain problem actually in his house. So he couldn't come. I reviewed what I was going to say with him and he agreed. And we're just here to try to clarify. I looked at the packet in the minutes and the recommendation was very, very brief. Miranda, I feel, gave a very nice synopsis of what went down and happened at that meeting. So I really just wanted to clarify, uh, kind of like what's happened today. Whole lot of testimony. We discussed bridges, we discussed a whole lot of things and very little bit about rezoning. Just as I, as you see what kind of happened even today and all of what you've had to do with a very simple discussion that you had that went on for hours. So, um, clearly we, our discussion and our group is unanimous. We based it upon chapter 1655, the changes for the zoning, and it certainly didn't qualify that. We also spoke that the, felt that the high density residential, which the lot is now, was very appropriate. And then we also, which is unbelievably by coincidence, which we had knew nothing about, we also talked about that if it actually is done, uh, that a PUD and Ron has certainly has come over and over again over the years about redevelopment. So that discussion also touched on, uh, that if it was going to be rezoned, we should do it under a PUD, under the process of the redevelopment. But clearly, uh, you know, all the testimony, yes, went around drainage, I don't need to go there because it's already started down that road tonight. It didn't meet 16255, which is the mission of the planning commission to make the recommendation based upon the zoning ordinance. So that's really what I have. If I could, I'd like to just ask, because I think actually a couple of people in the audience too, we wanted to clarify, uh, the quasi judicial. So, yeah, so not tonight, but maybe sometime attorney Madison or staff could let us know because, uh, you know, we've always, we've operated over the last few years, we've even, you know, dropped our, our planning commission member, the trustee could not come to the meetings to be actually here. But now you're listening to it ahead of time. So I, you know, it doesn't really matter. I don't, I don't have a dog in a fight, but I think we need some clarity because certainly what I've worked on for the last five or 10 years is that we honored a certain policy with quasi judicial. And now it seems that it's changed. So I'm not speaking anything, but-
No, I appreciate that. I was, I was surprised that we got the link to that recording myself today. Thank you.
Can I make a comment on that, though?
Yes.
Um, I was happy to get the link today. I feel like it's best to be informed to come in here completely ignorant would literally take extra hours and we already take on this stuff. I feel like having listened to the planning commission meeting this afternoon, um, has definitely, I feel like I'm ahead of the game for those who haven't. And I, I don't understand, I mean, why Roger Cornell would want people to come in here completely blank slated. I'm not getting it because you need to have some information to make decisions, in my opinion.
I gotta say, I did not, I'm not, I don't care, I don't complain. I asked for clarification because we've operated under one policy.
Well, we can give you that. The day was the day.
Yeah, no, I was surprised, but I, I was glad to be able to listen to it, too. Thanks for that comment. Any more questions for Roger, Tanya? If not, we'll go ahead to our next public comment.
Jim Reese, 66 Barker Road. Since I, my name was invoked, I want to clarify, and my comments were taken out of context. What I said was, as someone who's on the planning, uh, the parking subcommittee, was we identified over 20 spots in town, two that can be developed by the town for additional parking. And while that was a need, listed as a need in the comprehensive plan, the last large scale undeveloped high density residential lot of that size meets a greater importance to the community than additional parking. We need more housing than we need parking. We have opportunities for parking, we have less opportunities for housing. Bottom line, this just doesn't meet the criteria as it was listed and given to us. Uh, and I want to say, I'm also confused because I went to, uh, training on quasi judicial planning and you're not, what I was told was you're not supposed to get evidence and get testimony and prejudge anything before hearing it. So I also think that it's wrong for you to listen to the information, listen to testimony, listen to the comments before you come in and vote on it. I could be completely wrong, but I think that, uh, when we look into this a little farther, that you should not be prejudicing yourself by listening in advance. We're not even allowed to talk to people in the grocery store about this kind of stuff. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Jim. Are there any public comments against this proposal, folks in the room?
Can I ask a question to clarify with Jim?
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Hey, Jim, when you, um, did that assessment of the 20 parking lots that were available, that, that was city land?
No, there's 20 possible spots that could be, some of them that would need to be acquired, but there was two that the town owns currently that would net 160 additional parking spots. One of them is the Old Town Parking, the Old Town Shop Spot, and the other is Lakeview Drive from Rodeo Court to the end, that all the town needs to do is say, we want to give the green light on this, put the money into it and get public works to develop it. So the idea is that we already have the availability to get parking, we have less availability to get more housing.
But Jim- Um, the old shop, the Old Town Shop Spot also, though, was being suggested for housing as well.
Yes, and in, and in my proposal that I gave three times to the planning commission was that in the interim, that could be used as parking because we might be five years out from that being actually developed in part into housing. But in my estimation, we could have been 18 months out from using that as a parking lot. So that was how I, I, our subcommittee put together the plans to present to the planning commission, or to the BOT.
I see. So interim, parking, long-term housing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment, Chris?
Evening again. Long night. Christopher Larson, Netherlands resident, and, uh, in the context of this conversation, one-time chair of the planning commission as well. So have some experience in looking at these kind of issues before the town. And as Miranda said and others have said, the problem with this is, and to be clear, I'm speaking against the rezoning of this property because it does not meet any of the criteria laid out for the planning commission and for that judgment. Secondly, like people have said, this is one of the few places we have left zoned for high density housing for workforce development. If you've been part of this town for any period of time, certainly within the last few years, that's one of the number one issues is workforce housing in this town. Even the applicant has stated that is one of the primary needs and has for a long time said that that is one of the goals for this property. In fact, when he purchased the property, he purchased it knowing it was zoned HDR. And it has only since not used it for- and has only since not used it for housing, used it in this other way, and then put himself in this position where he suddenly cannot pay to use it in the way that he wasn't, that it wasn't zoned for. His arguments in the package about, a packet regarding the problems he's had with the I R S are fully self-induced. They are because he didn't develop as housing, as the H D R zoning, he put this in, and that's a problem that he brought on himself. It doesn't require the town to rezone and rethink its priorities, because he did something differently than what was zoned. So I just would very much argue that, like people have said, the need for housing is critical. The need for parking is less critical. There are, there are more options for parking than there are for housing, just as Jim just said. And this is one of those few places where we can do it. If there is no, if he has no desire to develop housing on an H D R zoned property, then he can sell it to someone who does, and he will make a very good profit off of what he bought it for seven years ago. Profit is, and money is not the problem here. We can get housing on this property where we need it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comments from folks in the audience?
Hello again. Lindsay Danforth, 400 Colson Street. Um, I am speaking to tell you guys not to rezone this property. Um, the parking problem really stems from the current parking requirements moratorium. Not an actual lack of parking spaces, but that's an entirely separate issue. Um, as Miranda stated earlier, we have identified in the Comprehensive Plan that there's a need for workforce housing, and that is what was proposed originally on this property. Once again, we are faced with plans and promises from Ron that never had any progress. He wasted so much time with town staff and board members, only to sit on the property and do absolutely nothing. Do not rezone this property. If Ron has lost interest in building anything for this town on that property, then let him sell it.
Thanks, Lindsay. Appreciate it. Any other comments against, um, this proposal? Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, I want to open up the folks online. Are there any comments for folks online, um, against this proposal of rezoning?
Hi, it's Teresa Robertson. I would be at the meeting, except that I'm sick. I, my, my comments are going to last more than two minutes.
Actually, your comments will need to end. We need to end the meeting at eleven o'clock, right?
What you really need to do is a motion to continue.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to continue this meeting. To, um, and I have to pick it, I'm sitting here looking at the agenda as it's, Miranda, for future. Yeah.
But generally, uh, yeah, I'm, myself and I'm representing-
Yeah, Teresa, Teresa, in that we got two minutes till eleven.
Yeah, we're basically asking you to deny it, so.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and, and we can actually give you your three minutes, um, when we, hopefully you're feeling better, and when we meet again. So I make a motion to extend.
You did to me. So, yeah, I'll be happy to use-
Thanks, thanks, Teresa. Thank you very much. I make a motion to continue, um, this action item to, um, and Miranda, you and I need to talk out loud here, because I'm looking at all kinds of things that are-
And, and also I consult the applicant, Mr. Mitchell.
I might, I know, so, Ron, the next meetings are when you have your medical procedures.
So we could look, if we looked at April, when, after, when you're done with your medical procedures, that's pretty, pretty, um, quite doable, actually.
Right, so the options are-
April fourth.
March seventh, March twenty-first, April fourth, April fourth.
April fourth would be, um, would be the most available. Did, did you, did you give a nod to April fourth, or?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that would be, that would work out well for our schedule, and that would give us, give you time to take care of things in March. Thank you. Actually, I make that motion to continue this meeting till April fourth. Continue this action item to April fourth. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Maisie?
Trustee Corbalon?
Yeah, I guess so.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
No.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
And Trustee Kums Isma?
Yes.
Thank you.
I motion to adjourn.
I second. Maisie?
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Corbalon?
Yeah.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
And Trustee Kums Isma?
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at eleven oh one P M.
Thanks, Maisie.